We're going to go on the recording?
The recording has begun.
All right. Item number one, roll call. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, Reg. Meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Order. The time is 7:07 PM. Please note that in support of the physical distancing during the local public health emergency, in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order that relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we are conducting the via meeting. These are video conferencing. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. If any participant who was presenting during the meeting would like to leave prior to the end of the meeting, please state your name and announce that you are leaving for the benefit of the recording. Please practice, consider it video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting destructive behavior on the camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren?
Present.
Vice President Vaughn? Vice President Vaughn? You got it? Thank you. Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Screen?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Here.
Thank you. All commissioners are present. And for the benefit of the recording, I am also going to conduct a presenters and staff roll call. Assistant Fire Chief Glass?
Present.
Thank you. Emergency Services Manager Gluhan?
Present.
General Manager Logan?
Present.
District Legal Counsel Siegel?
Present.
Assistant County Counsel Coelho?
Good evening. Present.
Thank you. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks?
Present.
And Technical Services Consultant BB?
Present.
Thank you. Presenters and staff are all accounted for.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, I also want to note for the record that as Commissioner Kearney has deployed an organ on wildfire-related services and you know, so his connection, we'll see how he does on the connection. So thank you, Terry, for making the effort after that long day. All right, so we'll move to item two. Public comments. Persons wishing to address the district on any subject, whether or not on the agenda, may do so now. Please note, however, the district is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. Please note that while the district board will hear comments upon items which are on the agenda at this time, the district will not act on any such items until the item is under consideration by the district. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker. Do we have any public comments on items, on items, or not, items on the agenda or not on the agenda? Do you have any public comments at this time? All right. Hearing none. We will now move to item three, which is the president's remarks. So with that, I want to introduce a, first of all, is County Supervisor Semidion online with us yet? I did not see him. So County Supervisor Semidion is scheduled to attend. We'll see if he is able to attend. The other person I would like to welcome is Rob Coelho, who is with the county legal counsel, who will now be playing in a, moving forward should be playing an important role in the staff operations. So I want to welcome Rob. Also want to recognize Jean Elverson, who's online, who was with us for many years as our district clerk. Good to see you, Jean. So overall, here we are tonight, mid-September, and everyone in, you know, here is painfully aware that we find ourselves in the height of fire season. You know, we have been fortunate that the district has not been directly impacted as of yet. But that is, you know, through good fortune, I think, up to this point. You know, I don't think we can become complacent. As we all saw with the August lightning event, how the district could have been impacted and how fast the situation can deteriorate. So I think that just reiterates the importance of what the commission does and the work the staff is doing to move forward our, you know, our programs, forward-thinking proactive programs that the district has been working on. I want to thank the staff for the great work over the last two months since we last met. You know, we didn't meet in August. And so the staff has been carrying forward. So we'll get a report out on all the activities that have occurred in the last two months. So thank you to the staff for keeping things moving forward. We do have a very full agenda for this evening. So at this time, I would, if, if County Supervisor Semidion is online, I'd like to move item six up in the agenda.
He just joined.
He just joined. Excellent. Okay. So at this time, I would, with the, if the rest of the commission approves, I want to move item six up to, take care of item six now, on the agenda. Does anyone object?
No.
All right. So let's move to item six. Okay, which is the, I'm going to move my paper around. Item six, which is discussion of, item six, which is Los Altos Hills County Fire District Management Audit Update. So what we have here is item A, discussion with Fifth District Santa Clara County Supervisor Joe Semidion regarding the Board of Supervisors' review of the management audit of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, including the Board Policy Committee process. All right. So Jay, you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, thank you. And thanks for, everyone for joining us this evening. With no further remarks, I would just like to invite Supervisor Semidion to share with it, with us his thoughts and engage in discussion with us. So Supervisor, we're very pleased to have you. Thank you so much for joining us. And I know that you're just coming from another meeting. So hopefully you've been able to take a deep breath. And now you're on another Zoom conference. So here we are.
I have indeed. Thank you very much. Happy to be with you. Thank you for making time for this conversation. I'm going to keep my remarks very brief and then just respond to questions. And if I can ask either you, Jay Logan, or your Board President, Mr. Warren, to sort of queue up the questions, I will take them in, or comments, I'll take them in whatever order you direct. I think, at the risk of stating the obvious at this point, board members and the, commission members and the general public know that there are two separate but related things happening that are of significance to the district. The first is that there has been, of course, a management audit performed by the county's Management Audit Consulting Team, the Harvey Rose folks. That has been a long process. As you know, the audit was considered at our Finance and Government Operations Committee, FGOC, on which Supervisor Cindy Chavez and Dave Cortese sit. It is teed up now to come to our Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation Committee on Thursday, the 17th, just a couple of days from now, for discussion and consideration and possible recommendation by that committee, on which I sit with my colleague Supervisor Mike Wasserman. These audits, I should stress, are routine. They're part of our county government system. The Harvey Rose consultancy has been on contract to the Board of Supervisors for, gosh, at least 30 years that I can recall. We routinely dispatch the consulting firm to audit various county departments and agencies. They can get a little scratchy sometimes. That's just the nature of it. Very few of us really like someone critiquing our performance, even though we all know we can and would like to do better. So the first review of those audits was at FGOC, Finance and Government Operations Committee. That's the norm. That is the committee through which all audits return. I asked specifically that since the subject matter of the audit was specifically related to the work of the Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation Committee, that we hear it there as well. And that's what will happen. I should underscore that I think we've made great progress in the last few months. Thank you to you all for being part of that progress. There were seven recommendations that were made by the audit team. Your official position, as I understand it, is that we are at agreement on five and a half, almost six of the items that are before us. The only one where there is a significant difference of opinion at this point is a recommendation from the auditor to suspend the delegation of authority from the county to the board. And I think you all are making the case, which I think you've made very effectively, that that suspension of delegation would not be called for, given the fact that we've gotten a yes on all of the substantive recommendations, the other six items that were identified in the audit. I mentioned that there were two different but related items. And the second one, which is a subject of, I think, even greater concern, is it has become apparent during this process that there is some sentiment on the Board of Supervisors, notably from Supervisors Chavez and Cortese, to simply consolidate the existing fire districts, meaning County Fire, Central Fire, and the South County District, and the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, to create essentially a consolidated, a single consolidated district. That raises obvious questions and concerns for you all and the folks that the district serves. I say they are separate because, quite candidly, I think at one point, there were folks that thought that they might use the audit report as a pretext, if you will, to pursue consolidation. I think the fact that we have gotten to yes on the audit makes that a less and less plausible path. And I think that's good news, frankly, because I think then that tees up the conversation for consolidation as a separate standalone item. And I think it should be viewed as such. So the timeline on all of this is, as I mentioned earlier, that this coming Thursday, our Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation Committee will take up both this audit, the one for Los Altos Hills County Fire District, as well as the South County Audit, which was a companion audit, if you will. And we'll make recommendations after hearing. Look forward to hearing from you all, to the extent you want to participate at that hearing. And we'll send it off to the full board for consideration, possible action. We expect that that will be on the 6th of October. And I paused and checked myself because occasionally the date got misremembered, but it's Tuesday, the 6th of October. And at that same time, that same meeting, we fully expect that there will be a proposal from my colleague Supervisor Chavez and Supervisor Cortese for consolidation. That is obviously a matter of greater concern, but both of these are on track for arrival at our board on the 5th of October. We are scheduled, excuse me, 6th of October there. I did it again. I apologize. October 6th. And we are also scheduled to have a full meeting of our Board of Supervisors on the 22nd of September. Not clear to me yet what items that are fire-related, if any, will be on that agenda, but we will certainly keep you posted and involved. Why don't I stop there? I realize I had committed to be brief, and I've already exceeded whatever definition of brief we might all bring. So how can I help? And questions, if any, are more than welcome.
Well, thank you. That was very informative. Thank you Supervisor Semidion. So what I'd like to do here is that I'll take questions from the commissioners about, for, you know, for the supervisor, and then we'll move on to questions from the public. So we'll start with the commission. So do we have any questions from commissioners for Supervisor Semidion?
Duffy speaking. I'd be curious to ask Supervisor Semidion how he interprets what the town is doing in terms of notifying the public about the consolidation issue.
You know, I think that the town's communications have been helpful. I am aware of them. They have been professional and courteous in reaching out to our office to let us know what they're up to so that no one is surprised. I think it can only be helpful, frankly, Commissioner, because I'm acutely aware of the fact that for much of my district in the northwest portion of the county, you know, what goes on in San Jose every day is not typically top of mind here at the county government center, the work we do. And so I think anything that the town can do to communicate with our common constituents about what's happening here and how they can participate in a polite, responsive, respectful way, that's all to the good, in my view.
Yeah.
Thank you, Duffy. Anything else, Duffy?
No, that was very good. Thank you, Joe.
Janice, any questions?
No, not at this point.
And I would turn on my camera, but I don't seem to have the capability of doing that. So it's not that I'm hiding from you all. I promise.
Roger, any questions?
No, I'd prefer just to let the public have an opportunity to, Supervisor.
Let me, let me get to the rest of the commission. Melvin, any questions?
No questions from me at this time.
All right. Terry, any questions from Oregon? I take that as a no. And George, anything to follow up?
Nothing. Nothing from me. Thank you.
All right. All right. With that, I'd like to ask the public if there are any questions from the public.
President Warren, if I could just ask a quick question, would you like three minutes on the timer for public comment?
Please.
Okay.
Please.
And it looks like Drew Anderson has her hand raised.
Please, let's proceed. Drew?
Yeah. I just had to turn my speaker on. Sorry. Um, yeah, I'm kind of concerned about the consideration of consolidating the district. My husband, Bob, and I have lived in the town since 1986. In the last 20 or so years, we've been very active in volunteer work for the town, primarily in the area of emergency preparation. And the working with the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and the management of the town, we have an Emergency Communications TAM Committee that we work with. The Fire District has just been very integral to our community. It's just a kind of a life force that helps us get prepared. We seem like we're, you know, pretty well off up here. I'm sure some of us are. But the big issue is, is we're designated as a wildland area. And I don't know if you remember the Paradise story, but that was a model prepared, prepared community. And it, and then it, you know, kind of dissipated. And not that that was part of the reason for its demise, but this community really is dependent on the good work that's been done by the Fire District, for the CERT program, for the response, for the whole community involvement with the Water District, et cetera. And it's just sort of a passionate piece of our community. And none of us would really like to lose it. It's just part of what identifies our community is, you know, being together and working together and working for a common cause, which is, you know, protection of our safety and health of the membership of the community. We appreciate Supervisor Semidion, you attending this meeting and hearing our comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I think I've managed to project the screen now finally with your assistance. So appreciate that if I'm now coming through.
Great. Thank you. Next question from the public. Sarah, who's queued up? Sarah, you're muted.
There it is. Neil is the next person with his hand up. Neil, Neil.
All right, let's reset the clock for him.
Yeah.
Thanks. Mine will be very quick. I really just have a question. I have not heard a description yet of what the implications of consolidation would be, especially is there any way we can estimate, say, on a percentage basis, how much of our budget or our financial reserves might we lose?
And let me just check with the president. Is that a question that's directed towards me?
I think it is, sir.
Yeah, I think the candid answer is, we don't know. And that is, I think, part of what has caused concern in the community. It is certainly part of what has given me cause for concern. The proposal has not yet been formally made or even formally sunshineed and surfaced. It is, their consolidation could come in many different forms, in many different fashions. And, you know, bluntly, I think there, there are questions here about, is this about fire protection? Is it about money? Is it about control? Is it about all of the above? I think that that remains to be seen. And I think these are all questions that need to be addressed before it would be responsible to take action. And I think it's a very, very complex set of issues. When you start talking about the fire protection needs countywide, in a county of 2 million people, with not just our county fire, but also South County and your district, Los Altos Hills County Fire, and then there are nine or 10 other firefighting entities locally, plus the folks at CAL FIRE. And that's before you get into the questions about organization and funding. So lots of good and important questions that have yet to be addressed, let alone answered.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. All right, Sarah, next question from the public, please.
We don't have anyone with their hand raised, but Dave Stewart has asked, what would Supervisor Semidion recommend the citizens of the Fire District do to express their concerns effectively?
Well, I think two things. I would suggest that you be in touch with our board and committees, both specifically on the 17th and two days from now, to express your point of view. And if you're concerned, that would be the time to express it. I, you know, I think, and then the board meeting on October the 6th will be a critical date in terms of the larger consolidation discussion. You know, I remind my constituents often that we have a district system in which, you know, the Los Altos Hills County Fire District has only one supervisor that represents them, and I am that supervisor. So any action gets taken by three votes, a majority of our five-member board, that, and that means that by definition, and this is true across the board, that by definition, decisions are going to be made in significant part by folks who do not represent the affected area. So we have a meeting this Thursday. I would encourage people to hop on the virtual meeting. I think your district can share information about how to do that. Certainly, my office can. I believe Chris Zanardi from my office is on the call and would be happy to share that information. But, you know, bluntly put, folks, if my colleagues don't hear from you the nature and extent of your concern, then they're going to think there isn't concern. That, I mean, these are folks who have responsibilities and duties in other parts of the county where they are understandably attentive, just as I am, I hope, attentive to things happening in my district. So they need to hear from you. And as always, and, you know, as you always are, you know, politely and respectfully, with some acknowledgement of the fact that we're all in this together as a county, and that the district has a willingness and a commitment going forward to work collaboratively. And I think the district's done a great job in these last few months of communicating that. So thank you again. But, but I do think if you're concerned about the potential for these audits to be used as the pretext for consolidation, you need to speak up now. And I would do that at the meeting on Thursday. I sit on that committee, as I mentioned, so I'll work hard with the permission of the chair to try and craft a path forward that is responsible. But then when we get to the meeting on the 6th of October, it really will be important there that people hear from you and that they know that you care. Because otherwise, you know, it, it's not readily apparent to folks who don't represent the area. I've heard it loud and clear from folks in the district, but, you know, other, other members of the board are not going to have the benefit of that communication. That was a long-winded answer to say be in touch and be in touch often.
Yeah.
It's a good answer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sarah, any other questions queued up?
Yeah, I'm going to queue you up. So we have a question from Alan, followed by a question from Commissioner Tyson, and a question from Bob Hag. So Alan, you can sound off.
Thank you. Supervisor Semidion, thanks so much for attending. I wonder if you could tell us what the process will be should the supervisors vote to merge, merge the districts? Is this something that will go through the LAFCO system? Will the citizens of Los Altos Hills County Fire District have the opportunity to vote on it? And if so, if a majority of them vote against it, does that prevent the districts from being merged?
Well, Mr. Ruffin, a really good and thoughtful question, but the honest answer is, we don't know. And I, and I mean, excuse me, we don't know, not I don't know. The reason I'm saying that is because we haven't seen the proposal yet. And this is one of the things that is, as I said earlier, creating, you know, considerable anxiety and concern, we will have at least some minimum idea of what is to be considered on the 6th of October, the Wednesday before, because that's when the agenda goes out. But unfortunately, that doesn't mean that all of the supporting documents will be attached. And, you know, I regret to tell you that I've been in meetings where, you know, paperwork shows up literally in the midst of the meeting that I would have preferred to see well in advance, and that I think the public should have had a chance to see well in advance. So if that happens, I would encourage you to respectfully and politely point that out so that there isn't action on the 6th of October that we think of as precipitous. I think the one piece of the answer that I can give you some certainty about is that, you know, one of the things that the board could do, if there are three votes, is simply withdraw the delegation of authority that the board has previously extended to folks in the South County and to your Los Altos Hills County Fire District. And if they simply withdraw the delegation of authority or revoke the delegation of authority, then de facto, what happens is we've got a county district that is comprised, as I understand it, of the geographic area in those three venues. Now, that's, that's the sort of simple, rough, blunt instrument that might be used. And, you know, after that, presumably, there would be some further discussion. But the part that has made folks understandably nervous is that, you know, at any given time, the supervisors can't simply revoke the delegated authority. And all of a sudden, that leaves you, for all intents and purposes, without control of your own local district. I should further note, and I think some of you may know this, but probably many do not, the delegation of authority to the Los Altos Hills County delegation of authority to the Los Altos Hills County Fire District over the last 40 years is a more expansive one. It imbues the district commissioners with more authority than the one in South County. So the folks in South County are used to having a more limited say, one might put it. Whereas in the case of our Los Altos Hills County Fire District, pretty much, you know, all of the discretion has been delegated to your commission without, with the exception of the ability to bring litigation. And of course, the Board of Supervisors takes final action on the budget, just as we do with other dependent districts like the Library District, for example. Shorter answer, sure, please. But the shorter answer is, I think the thing that you can be pretty clear about is that whatever we see in the way of proposals on October the 6th, is likely to include the revocation of the delegation of authority as sort of the precondition to whatever else follows.
My follow-up question, Supervisor Semidion, is if the delegation is revoked, does that permit the money to be used outside of the district?
It's my understanding that the answer to that question is yes. But, you know, we'll be waiting on County Council to give us the formal answer to that. And I candidly, Mr. Epstein, I think that's, you know, part of what's going on here. People, you know, when budgets get tight, people look for other sources of funding. And the fact that your district has been well-managed and fiscally prudent, and has both a solid tax base, but also unspent reserves, makes it a desirable target for those who are looking for funding sources.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah, next up?
Next up, Commissioner Kearney, followed by Bob Hag.
You missed me, Sarah.
Sorry, I meant Commissioner Tyson. I'm looking for Commissioner Kearney. He bumped off the call and joined again. Sorry.
Many people do confuse us, and rightly so. I want to join the others in thanking Supervisor Semidion for joining us, and thanking you for giving us this chilling news ahead of it actually happening, so we can at least be better prepared. My, I don't have a question, it's more of a comment to the other commissioners, as well as the public, and just to note that the town of Los Altos Hills, and you know, Commissioner Spreen and I are both sit on the City Council here. We have it on our agenda for Thursday night as a new business, a resolution, a report on the recommended action on the proposed consolidation. And there's a subcommittee of two other City Council members. So I don't know what their report says yet, but just stay tuned, since that's two separate City Council members. But it does look like we are addressing a response to this consolidation. And so we can guess that the town will be certainly in support of our efforts to resist a consolidation.
And if I may just respond briefly, I do, you know, I do think if either the town through the council, or the district through your board, your commission, is, has a position on this, is opposed, then I think taking formal action to communicate that is going to be important, because otherwise, people will say, well, you know, they haven't taken a position. Apparently, they don't have a problem with it. So if you've got a position, I'd encourage you.
Supervisor, that's item 6B on our agenda tonight. We're going to take a formal position.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Hag. Can you guys hear me? I am a former fire captain with Santa Clara County Fire District. I was with Los Altos in the merger in 97, and worked very closely with the commission on things that concern fire protection. We were the first ones to start chipping program. We brought goats in to eat the underbrush. I mean, you've done so many good things. My question is, what brought this on? Why are you doing it? If it works, don't fix it. You were the first ones to address putting the utilities underground, because you're worried about all the overhead wires, and now look what happened. What's going on, what we've dealt with the last few years. I've been retired 10 years, and I'm glad I am. And everything that's going on there, saying about getting rid of the undergrowth, Los Altos Hills has already done that. And since I've left the fire department and still wanted to help people, and became a cowboy, I am involved in the large animal evacuation team for Santa Clara County. I went to Magalia, I went to Paradise to help rescue horses, and saw the devastation there. And I remember when I fought the fire in Lydicote Circle way back when, and how many houses did we lose? 17 with inferior equipment. But we've made a stop because we had good fire prevention, we had good roads in and out, we had good water sources. And we're still addressing those issues today with the things you're doing now with the chipping program. You're the ones taking out the dead trees. So my question is, if it works, if it doesn't need fixing, why are you trying to do away with it? And with this large animal evacuation team, when we met with all the other cities and counties that had horses, Los Altos was the most squared away. Mike Sanders had a program that was way ahead of the rest of us in all the counties. And I represent Gilroy, and he could tell us where every horse was, what they had, how West Wind Barns, Fremont Hills Stables, they all had evacuation plans, what they're going to do. I mean, you're so far ahead of the game. And the Los Altos Hills Fire Commission can take credit for that. So my question, if you take away the Fire Protection District, the town of Los Altos Hills is going to suffer. Bottom line. You've got your act together, things are squared away, and it doesn't make any sense to, why are we even talking about this?
The, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your full name, sir.
Bob Hag.
Mr. Hag, yes.
I'm a former fire captain with Los Altos. I read about this in the paper and was shocked at the response from the Firefighters Union and from Cindy Chavez.
Well, yeah. Here's what I would tell you. When you say, why are you doing this? That is a question that is best addressed to the two members of the board who have stepped forward with the potential proposal for consolidation. And they are Supervisor Chavez and Cortez. And I wouldn't presume to speak to their motivation. So you have to ask them. The decisions, certainly your local commissioners have not proposed this step, nor have I. It is a proposal that has come from Supervisor Chavez and Supervisor Cortez. And they're going to flesh out their proposal presumably at the October 6th meeting. For what it's worth, it is not a proposal I could anticipate supporting. I, you know, I always tell folks, look, I keep an open mind at every meeting I walk into. But, you know, I don't walk into the meeting without some ideas in my head already. And to your point, my, the ideas in my head are, what the hell are we thinking? This doesn't make any sense to me. But the ultimate call is made by three, let me find a good spot here on the screen, three colleagues. So, you know, you either need to change a couple of minds with Supervisor Cortez and Supervisor Chavez, if you're opposed, or you need to make sure that Supervisors Ellenberg and Wasserman, the other two members of our board, understand your point of view. I would encourage you to participate by, you know, taking a minute to speak to the committee this Thursday, if your schedule permits, and the full board at the meeting on October the 6th. Because I think, you know, candidly, as a former firefighter, your perspectives on this are going to be important. And as I said earlier, I think, you know, when you try and figure out what's going on here, and what is it really a public safety issue, or is it about the desire to access funds, or is it about who has the responsibility and control of the body? I probably could have and should have been a little more direct with Mr. Epstein earlier. Look, if the delegation of authority is revoked on October the 6th, what happens then is that the Board of Supervisors becomes the Fire Commission for all three of those districts, essentially. So that authority that has currently been delegated to your board returns to the Board of Supervisors. We already sit as the commissioners. In fact, I have a, you know, there's an item on our agenda that identifies that in addition to sitting as the Board of Supervisors, we sit as the comported commissioners for the central fire. Right now, we don't serve that function for these two other dependent districts, South County and Los Altos Hills County Fire, because that authority's been delegated. But if the delegation is withdrawn, then what happens is all of a sudden, you've got five people, four of whom don't live in or represent the district, you've got five people who are the Fire Commissioners, quote-unquote, for Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Hope that clarifies a little bit.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sarah, anything else?
I don't have anyone in the queue. So if anyone else would like to speak, please either raise the hand function on your screen, or speak up now.
Yeah, this is Duffy speaking. I'd like to just ask for a little guidance here from Supervisor Semidion. The town actually sent out a wonderful mailer to all of the residents of the town, but they did not send it to the unincorporated area. I double-checked that, because that's, everything we try to send out, we always include all of the residents that we represent. So would you not think, and maybe we can do that with the other agenda items that we have tonight, that we should now take a more proactive approach and make sure all of our residents that we represent receive a similar notification? What do you think about that?
Well, Commissioner, what I think about that is you're throwing me a softball. If the question is, do I support public engagement and participation, I do. If the question is, do I think it's important for all the affected residents to know what's at stake, I do. If the question is, can you and should you communicate in a similar fashion as the town has already chosen to use with folks in the district who are not inside the town, I would encourage you to do that, consistent with whatever advice you get from your legal counsel about what's appropriate and lawful, obviously. But I do, I always struggle with the fact that county government is, I describe it as the invisible layer of government. You know, we're down, the county, I have a district office in Palo Alto at the county courthouse there, but otherwise, you know, we're down here in San Jose, there are 20,000-plus county employees, we have an $8 billion a year budget, and yet, for the most part, people go happily about their lives, largely unaware of the fact that there is a county government unless they happen to use services. And in this case, I think, as I said, anything you can do to communicate, as long as you've run it by council, I can only say that it's not only a good thing to do, it's a, you know, it's the responsible thing to do, if you want to make sure that your public has a chance to weigh in with their point of view, whatever it may be, whether you or I agree with it or disagree with it.
Right. Good. Thank you. Thank you. Joe, that's great. Helpful.
Okay. Anything else from the public or commissioners? All right. Thank you, Supervisor Semidion. I think if there's nothing else on 6A, what we'll do here is that we're going to move to items 6B and 6C.
Mr. President, before you move on, can I just offer one not very subtle closing remark, if I may?
Please do. Please.
You know, the democratic process, as you all know, rewards those who are engaged and punishes those who are absent. I would strongly encourage you, whatever your point of view, do not be absent from this process. That's my last word on the subject tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. And with that, we'll continue to be engaged. We're going to move to item 6B. There are two recommendations for the commissions for approval. We will consider and discuss each recommendation individually. Item 6B recommendation, approval of a motion by the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to oppose action by the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors to suspend or remove the delegation of authority to the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and to oppose consolidation of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and to direct the board president to send a letter to the board, County Board of Supervisors stating this action. General Manager Logan, do you have anything to add to this recommendation?
Just to comment that the motion, 6B, addresses the issues that have been discussed by Supervisor Semidion, the discussion by the commissioners, and by the public here tonight. I recommend the commissioners approve item 6B.
I'd like to make such a motion.
Thank you, George. Do you have a second?
Duffy, second.
Great. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Just a quick question.
The commission? Yeah, Roger.
Is there any reason to make these separate resolutions versus having a single one? I think I have no issue with the intent of these. I'm just thinking, is there any, given they are kind of separate but connected issues?
I think we've just got to queue up agenda-wise, Roger, at this point. We've got 6B, which is to send a letter to the county, you know, expressing that we oppose such action. And then 6C, which is basically, the way to think about 6C, is that we're asking for guidance and approval by the rest of the commission to expand the ad hoc subcommittee's charter. Okay? So I think we've got two distinct actions. So let's just do 6B, get it voted on, and then move to 6C and discuss what we want, if we want to increase the charter for the ad hoc committee.
My question, which is, again, purely bureaucratic, is really in terms of the motion, which addresses both the suspension or revocation of delegation of authority, and the opposing consolidation in one recommendation. Is there any reason to have those separated? Again, I'm open to, I have no particular preference on that, but just, I just noticed that we've discussed them as separate items, and is there, is it modeled issued to have them in the same one?
Okay, so you meaning within 6B, opposing delegation, opposing, revoking of delegation of authority, and opposing consolidation, two different noes?
Yeah, is there any, and this is probably a question for the legal team, is, does this provide any advantage to have separate resolutions opposing these, since these will be different discussions in different organizations and different meetings? Again, I have no preference on that. I just wanted to, I was curious about that question.
Legal? Dan?
Warren, I think that this is a policy decision, whether to do it in one or two, is, they're both perfectly appropriate. And I think it's a decision for the commission, assuming they're approved, to determine which they believe will be more impactful.
I would say, sorry to just butt in here, I think it's more impactful to say an emphatic oppose and lump them together.
Okay. Okay. I have no standing on this. I was just curious for those legal advantage to either one. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any thoughts? Comments? All right. Then I would, is there any public comment on this item? Any public comments? All right, hearing none. We'll now call for a roll call vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. President Warren?
Approve.
Vice President Vaughn?
Approve.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kearney? You might have lost Commissioner Kearney again. Commissioner Kearney?
Not available.
Not available.
Not available.
Commissioner Kearney is having problems with his connection. He's texting me. Is he wants to vote yes on this? Is there a way for him to do that if he texts me that? Or would he just be recorded as not voting?
He would be recorded as not present, even though the Brown Act rules have been... even though the Brown Act rules have been rescinded. Text voting has not been approved or proxy voting at this time.
That's interesting.
Is it possible that he is able to vote later in this meeting? Because I do believe it sends a message to say seven zero.
He says that he's muted on our end. Sarah, could you check and see if his connection is muted?
It does say that he's muted, but unfortunately, all I have is the option to ask him to unmute, which I've done.
So yes, I vote yes.
There we go.
Yeah!
There we go.
Very good.
Yeah, it's on your, it's on your guys' line. I am, I am unmuted.
Okay, great. Stay aboard.
Thank you. So the motion passes seven to zero.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to item 6C, recommendation, approval of a motion to authorize Los Altos Hills County Fire District Commission ad hoc management audit subcommittee to engage with Supervisor Semidion and the county in a wider conversation to pass forward to ensure public engagement, collaboration, and a process for discussion of the fire protection district, of fire protection in the district boundaries and within the county. General Manager Logan, do you have anything to add to this recommendation?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just make a few remarks. The Commission ad hoc management audit subcommittee was appointed by the Board of Commissioners at its meeting on September 18th, 2019. I thank the subcommittee for their tireless hours and energy to participate in the confidential exit conference, participate in writing the 68-page district response, find a common path moving forward, as stated in the post-audit report plan, and to be representatives to speak to the FGOC Committee and now to prepare for the presentation at the Hewitt Committee, followed by then the Board of Supervisors meeting. So we're still in the middle of all this process. The subcommittee will be reporting back to the Commission at its public meetings on the progress made. Approval by the Board of Commissioners of this motion renews the authorization of the subcommittee to ensure public engagement, collaboration, and a process for discussion of fire protection in the district boundaries and within the county. So I would recommend approval on item 6C. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. All right, I will now entertain a motion for item 6C.
Vaughn makes the motion.
Thank you, Melvin. Give me a second.
Spreen will second.
Thank you, Roger. All right, the item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commissioners on item 6C?
Now, I want to add my thanks to this subcommittee, which has put in a lot of hours and I'm sure was not on their horizon when they took this job, however many years ago. So thank them for the continued work.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Roger.
Terry, did you have a comment?
I did not.
All right, thank you. Any other, any Commissioner, any further Commissioner comments? All right, is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. There's no further discussion. We will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Great, and the motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so now we're going to take and we're going to go back to item four on the agenda. So item four, which is Santa Clara County Public Health Orders. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just some quick remarks here. Each week, it's Emergency Services Manager, Fire Captain Gluhann, and Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks and I are on a countywide public information conference call for status reports on COVID-19 and roundtable discussions about each agency on wildfires and other emergency conditions in their jurisdiction. Captain Gluhann is the Public Information Officer to report for the district. The County Office of Emergency Services and Health Department provides slides and media feeds for public communication. These are utilized on the district website every week and on the district public media channels. We can coordinate these efforts with the town of Los Altos Hills. And the two slides that are presented to you tonight, our health and COVID slides, demonstrate the information available through public media channels. And if you'll notice, that this is a new tiering process that the governor is now using. The county of Santa Clara moved from the purple tier to the red tier. And in that, they stay for three weeks and certain businesses are allowed to open. Next slide, please. On the next slide, there's an active link here that will take you into a set of information as to what work areas are open and what the restrictions are. So this is just some good information. Encourage everyone to be aware of what's going on in the county with COVID-19. The district does have health and safety as part of its mission to protect residents. So this is an important function for the district. So thank you. End of my report.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the Commission? All right. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. We will now move to item five. Presentation and approval of the draft financial audit report for fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021. Item 5A, presentation by Ahmed. I'm not going to be able to get Ahmed's last name correct. Eddie Bailey, financial consultant. Vargas, please introduce the item and explain the financial audit process.
Great. Thank you, Mark. So Commissioners, in your packet, you have a draft copy of the financial audit report for the fiscal year just ended, June 30th of 2020. And Ahmad from Aid Bailey, who is our auditors, he, I believe, has just logged in and will be available to just provide a brief background and answer any of your questions. But before I defer to him, I just wanted to point out a couple of updates. On page two of the audit, one of the page numbers is incorrect. We're going to get that fixed. One of the page numbers, it cites where to find a graph. So that'll be corrected. On page three, in the second bullet, it mentions capital projects. But we were going to change that. We had no large capital projects. We're going to actually change that to read no large projects and programs expenditures. And then finally, on page eight, there was a typo. We mentioned delayed deferment, but the delay should not be there. It should just be deferment of the fire hydrant water flow project. So again, just little fixes there. And of course, I'm open to any other suggested changes. And I will be passing those on to Ahmad before we have the final audit, which we brought to us for approval at the next meeting in October. So I would like-
Final approval in October.
Final approval in October, yeah. So I would just, I'd like to introduce Ahmad from Aid Bailey. And you can tell us all how to pronounce your last name, please.
Evening, everyone. My name is Ahmad Gharibey. And the name of the firm, you got it right, Corey, it is Aid Bailey. So this is the annual audit of the Fire District. Again, the scope of the audit is to ensure that the financial statements are fairly stated. It is a process in which we confirm the account balances are reported on the financial statements. We take a look at the internal controls. We look at the manner that you process receipts, disbursements, whatever expenses are outgoing or whatever inflows are incoming. It's a process that we take a look at. And we look at, you know, common practices that are out there in the industry. And then we come back at final, confirm these numbers, confirm your cash, confirm your property taxes, whatever revenues that you have in there, whatever numbers are reported on the balance sheet. And then at the end, we are required to tell you if we noted any audit adjustments. And I'm pleased to let you know that we had no adjustments to the financial statements. We encountered no difficulties in the performance of the audit. And then we noted no deficiencies in the internal controls with respect to the district. The report itself, I mean, the main statements that you will see obviously out there are on page 13 and 15. It may be a little different on your agenda packet, but inside the audit report itself, the page numbers are 13 and 15, which is basically the results of operations for this district. Shows about $12 million, $13 million in revenues. And then it shows a balance sheet in there with about $24 million in cash. And that is it for our audit. And I'll be more than happy to take questions.
All right. Thank you, financial consultant Vargas and Ahmad. Are there any clarifying questions from Commissioners at this time? Hearing none. Any questions from the public? All right, hearing none. All right. So what we're going to do is we want a motion to approve the draft audit so that we can bring it back for final approval in October. So I'm now looking, I will now entertain a motion. And for this motion, for all subsequent motions, and the Commissioner making the motion, and the Commissioner seconding the motion, please state your name for the benefit of the recording.
Commissioner Spreen moves acceptance of the draft audit. And by the way, I'd like to congratulate Corey, because this is really an honor for her, that things look good.
Yeah, this is Duffy second.
Very good. Okay. The item is open for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the Commissioners? There are none. Any further discussion from the public on this item? All right. We will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mark. And just for the record, I want to state that this is the, I don't know if we have to redo the motion, but because there are a couple of changes that I pointed out, if the motion needs to be clarified, that we are approving the draft with the changes, the three changes I outlined.
Yes, I modify the motion to accept the changes as outlined by Corey previously.
Right. And Duffy, second, of course.
Thank you.
Any further from the Commission? The public? Okay. All right, Corey, let's vote now.
Roll call, okay. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero. And Ahmad got disconnected.
I am back in, actually.
Oh, you're back, okay. So I don't think we have anything further. And you can dismiss yourself from the call if you'd like, now, Ahmad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ahmad.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
All right, we'll now move to item seven, which is the chief's report. I have 7A, let's go, let's start with 7A, which is capital improvements for the El Monte Station. 7A1, district authorization for installation of flooring. Assistant Chief Glass, please provide your report.
And good evening, President, members of the Board. I have tonight with us Support Services Manager, Dave Snow, who will be doing the presentation for considerations this evening to discuss some of the improvements to the El Monte Fire Station. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave Snow.
Hello, everyone, and thanks so much for having me on tonight. Next slide, please. Thank you. So if I could just take a moment to sort of introduce myself and our team. Many of you in the district are familiar with Support Services as provided by the county fire, Central County Fire Department over the years. I came from the county of Santa Clara a little bit more than a year ago, and I was running the Facilities and Fleet Department's Building Operations Management Division. So I do have experience with public works. And Rob Quello is on the line. I've called on him before. I'm familiar with working with contracts, compliance. And I just wanted to brief the Commission on our project approach. Everything that we do is consistent with public works contract law. We look for competitive bids and solicitations. We make sure that we're following county contract templates that include provisions for liability insurance, worker compensation insurance, performance bonds, payment bonds, depending on the extent of the project, and of course, warranty provisions. We do have a project team within Support Services. We have a number of staff that are well seasoned and experienced with both fire station construction as well as general office teams and projects. Next slide, please. So I appreciate the opportunity to sort of come before the Commission. I think the goal tonight is to really talk about kind of what we see as some short-term needs for the El Monte Fire Station and give this Board an opportunity to consider and sort of provide a little bit of direction of what you'd like to see us return back with in the month of October. And so I can tell you that my first priority as Support Services Manager is to take a look at removing carpet from the interior living area of the station. That's consistent with best practices for hazardous material mitigation, any kind of carcinogens that could get tracked into a residential area. The Central County Fire Department really practices healthy in, healthy out. So we want to take away any kind of risk to firefighters. And that really starts with removing carpeting from the living dormitory spaces. And we recommend installing luxury vinyl tile. I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. Obviously, the interior is due for an interior paint job. And then, as I was sort of making my rounds through that station, I noticed that it is dated when it comes to the restrooms. Modern firefighting stations typically have gender-neutral restroom pods. And what that means, I can explain it better in a later slide, is that instead of having a men's and a women's, a traditional bathroom style, given that we don't know what the face of firefighting might be in the future, it's important that we recognize diversity of firefighting staff and provide for individuals' privacy. And we found it beneficial, where possible and where we have lack of physical constraints, to consider, when we do bathroom remodels, to create sort of a toilet, shower, sink combination. And it looks to us, at an initial glance, that El Monte might be able to accommodate three of those pods where there's currently an existing men's and women's shower and restroom. And then a minor point is just considering the wall. And I apologize for the typo on item four, Office 202 and Office 203. And so I'll explain that in a moment. Next slide, please. And so as far as flooring with luxury vinyl tile, I know when I first sort of considered it as a facility manager, I was thinking like, are we talking about a rollout linoleum? No. This is like, it gives a hardwood look with a rubber backing feel. It's extremely durable and it's conducive to be non-porous. So it's easy to maintain, easy to clean. And there's a real good value on that. Right now, at the Saratoga Fire Station, we're moving forward with a plan to remove all of its upstairs carpet, including the elevator, and replace it with the same type of product. And then as part of the presentation, I just put it out there. There's different shades and hues and colors. And of course, that's all at the Board's discretion. Next slide, please. I didn't freeze, right? Oh, there I am.
No, you didn't freeze. All right.
Just checking. It's been a long day of Zoom meetings. I appreciate everyone's patience. So as far as painting, our current paint contractor is Empire Painting. And it's a person that's extremely experienced with fire station interior and exterior projects, particularly with our department. Just last fiscal year, we did an exterior painting of the Monta Vista Fire Station, our county fire headquarters in Los Gatos, and the Campbell Station. This fiscal year already, we've scheduled them for the Saratoga Station interior painting job. Next slide, please. So restroom renovation, I hope this comes through on everyone's screen, but you can kind of see the layout of the second floor of the El Monte Station. And what you see is a little bit of overlap of my yellow highlight box into the dormitory area. We feel that if we can compromise possibly one of the dormitories, this would give us the square footage that's necessary to take this and convert it from what's typically underutilized space. Right now, there's a whole set of lockers in the restroom that unfortunately aren't large enough to accommodate today's modern firefighters. And so redoing into a pod situation would- And so redoing into a pod situation would put one shower, one toilet, one sink, and we would have three separate pods. As a point of conversation, yes, we're always looking to increase diversity of our firefighters. Yes, I'm always hoping that we have more female firefighters. But at times, this station does not have women firefighters. And so it can be a little awkward because this is our only station with the houses of battalion chief and the residential dormitory that doesn't have a restroom assigned to the battalion chief. And so what typically happens is the station staff sort of take over the men's restroom shower area. The battalion chief takes over the women's and kind of puts a note on the door that, by the way, I'm in here taking a shower, because what could happen is women could travel out of the conference room area down the hallway to use a secondary restroom if the toilet next to the conference room was being used. So again, we think it's a better idea to create the three pods. Next slide, please. So the wall that's highlighted between Office 202 and Office 203, Office 203 is where the B C conducts daily business. And right now, for reasons unknown to me, I'm sure there were good ideas at the time, you have two doors that sort of open onto another pocket door. So possibly at one time, there was a thought for the need to flow through the space. What we're suggesting is to allow a project that would hardwall and remove that pocket door, leaving the two other doorways that opened the hallway. That provides a higher level of privacy and confidentiality for the B C to conduct their business. Next slide, please. So as far as next steps, what we're suggesting to the, for the commission's consideration, and we can come back with more information for a decision at the next meeting, is that for us to take a hard look at the restrooms beyond what we've considered just scratching pencil and paper is to contract with our architect. We do have on-call architectural services approved by the Board of Supervisors. We could write a project agreement at an amount not to exceed $50,000, and they could go through to create the plan, program, and schematic design that also results in the rough order magnitude of cost. It's very likely we wouldn't get close to that $50,000 limit, but it's somewhere probably more than 25, less than 50. At that point, we would return to the commission to say, if you want to do the restroom pod idea, this is the approximate rough order magnitude of cost, and then the commission would have a chance to approve the project at that point or not. And so if it was all approved and if we move forward, then we would go forward and advertise the projects. We would manage it on behalf of your commission, and we would be moving any kind of contractual obligations through our county council and Board of Supervisors if it came to that amount. We believe that the threshold of this capital project would be less, and that the fire chief has delegation authority to execute and manage the project at our level. The alternative is that we could return to the Fire District Commission meeting with just an estimate for flooring and paint. And that's a pretty simple process for us. We already have two contractors, one for paint, one for flooring. We would get them to get together and give us a rough order magnitude of cost for you to approve in October. Next slide, please. And so with that, I just want to tell you that I all appreciate the opportunity to come forward and speak to you about this. I appreciate your consideration for the station. It means a lot to station staff that work there on a daily basis, and I just want to let you know that they're well taken care of. There's no huge issues or problems right now. I did talk to them because there were questions about the kitchen and what could be done. We've had some initial conversations with our architect. The constraints of the building, unless you modified your conference room, which I don't think would be on the agenda, the constraints of the building sort of prohibit too much flexibility in the kitchen area. It's possible we could contract for a dollar threshold with an architect to take a look, is there anything that could be done? But right now, of the multitude of the 15 stations that I'm in charge of keeping up and running, El Monte's kitchen is certainly not at the top of the priority unless this commission felt otherwise, if you wanted to do anything to modernize. But those are kind of what I presented tonight are the, the, the top of mind, most pressing issues. And with that, I can answer any questions.
All right, any, let's, let's start with questions, and then we'll talk about how we want to move forward. So any questions from commissioners on the proposal here?
Duffy speaking. Okay. May I speak?
Please go, go Duffy.
Thank you. I, I'm impressed that they want to make these changes. That sounds really reasonable. However, I'm also curious, didn't we at one point think we needed to do something downstairs in the training room to sort of do some modular construction down there, and shouldn't, if that's a potential, shouldn't we, you know, add that to the list here for this project? Any comments from other commissioners that were involved in that discussion previously?
Melvin or Jay, do you recall anything?
Refresh my memory a little bit there for a second, Duffy.
Yeah, one, we basically looked at what we had in the training room there with a little small area for a office area for the emergency services manager. And then we thought, well, maybe they could have that be a little more circumspect in terms of like making it into something else, you know, another little tiny quadrant or a little, whatever they want to call these little rooms that people sleep in or rest in, but anyway, or work in. And organize the downstairs, that training room, remodel that in some way. So Jay, do you remember talking about any of that?
Yes, I do, very much so. I think I'm just, at this point in time, with the COVID-19, and I know that we shouldn't make plans based upon a current condition of public health emergency, but civilians are really not using the station just for health and protection reasons to the fire crews. So I would hesitate to start that discussion right now, but it may be something that we can talk about with Dave Snow and see if there's some possibilities perhaps in the future, or if that training room can be converted in some kind of way. I, I'm not sure that civilian offices right now would fit there, if that's what you're referring to. It's pretty much a storage and as an area for cert storage and equipment storage. Captain Gluhann's been in it a couple of times, but we have not been into the El Monte Station since March 17th, so.
Right, I know. It's been a lot, seven months or so, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't start thinking about it, whether we're going to throw in with this right now. It's going to, this is going to happen not overnight, you know, so maybe we should have some discussion going forward, whether we wanted to do it all at once and then postpone doing this for another six months or half a year or whatever. But, you know, clearly, we're going to want to do something with that training room down the line.
If I could respond to Duffy and still keep cutting off George, who's politely had his hand up, I would say that I think your comment is correct that we need to, discussion of administrative space for our, our staff is a key one. I think that's a much broader discussion and needn't be tied in with this one, which has a pretty directed effort already, so I would keep it separate. I don't think that this, I think proceeding on this, if we choose to do so, does not provide any obstacle to us discussing what kind of resources we need.
Right.
I'm going to agree with you. In turn, in terms of building changes and all the fact there's separate floors means I think we can effectively deal with them separately. Jumping to, to the crux of this, my feeling is I'd love for our station and our location to be a premier location, so the things I've heard today sound quite appealing to me. And my, the only question I have for Dave Snow is, is we have this small entry area, which is really wasted space because nobody uses that upstairs entrance, and I, I just don't know. I didn't see, I didn't see any changes to making that an effective office area or other thing useful, since we're already up in that area anyway. Has anybody late looked at that space?
From my perspective, people hadn't brought it up to me, but we'd be open to hear what the needs are, and, and certainly we can take a look, because doing the work in Office 202 and 203, you know, that's, it's certainly something we can consider.
The only thing I can think of is if there's some ADA reason that we
Exactly.
upstairs entrance.
The handicap parking is up there.
Exactly. Yeah, you have to keep that in mind, George. That's true. Thank you for bringing that up. That's exactly why that lobby is there, where the handicap parking is located, and we've had to use it a couple of times, so.
No, there's no elevator there either, so.
Right. Yeah, how about an elevator? I'm all for that.
Okay, thank you.
Good, otherwise it looks good.
Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, so my, so my feeling on this, guys, is that, a couple of things. One, you know, we all are aware, we, the commission, the district owns the fire station. The fire station is now 20 years old. And so we are actually, you know, due for probably a recapitalization of the fire station. To echo George's comments, I, I would like El Monte Station to be a very attractive fire station for firefighters. I want them to want to go to, come to El Monte Station. We need, and you know, one way we can do that is to keep it in great physical condition. And to do, take care of the maintenance, take care of the capitalization aspects to do, and to modernize it and keep it first rate. So I would actually encourage, Dave, is that just, as you go through the station, don't limit it to just this. Those other aspects of the station that are either suboptimal in terms of functionality, or, you know, have, you know, are worn out and are appropriate for revitalization, please bring them to this commission. Because I, I feel strongly, I'd like, I want to keep El Monte Station in great shape. I want to attract, you know, great firefighters. I want them to come there. I want it to be a clean, safe, healthy place for them to spend, you know, a lot of time. It's their home when they're not at home. And so, you know, and we have the means to be able to do this, and so please, you know, you've got a proposal here for the bathrooms, the flooring and the, and the wall, but let's just not limit it to that, you know, so in the future, let's, let's continue this conversation about areas that are pain points or frustration or just general improvement. Let's, let's bring them to this commission. So that's my comment. But I think what we need to do here is, is that we need to, we've got a proposal here to, for an architectural, to engage an architect for $50,000. And Rob, I think we need legal advice here, is that that, that request to spend that money wasn't on the agenda at this point. So how do we proceed? Can we, can we, may have a commissioner make a motion to, do not exceed $50,000 spend, or do we need to actually have a motion brought to the commission to be able to support that?
Mark, go ahead, Rob, please.
If, if the question's directed to me, and Dan may have some specific input tied to historical issues, but in order to make this fully transparent and make it clear to the public what the possible expenditure funds may be, I, I think it's probably best to provide some direction to administration, Jay, to come back to the board with a proposal for what to recommend, and, and let the board take specific action on that and agendize it as such. That would be my legal recommendation tied to Brown Act disclosures and making sure that you've, you've teed up specifically what you'll be voting on, so the public has an opportunity to weigh in to the extent that there's any desire to do so.
And Mark, I certainly can agree with that, and that's actually what I understood the proposal for Mr. Snow to be tonight was to tee it up, to bring it back for discussion for October. So maybe I misunderstood the proposal that was made tonight, but I do not think a specific ask was made tonight, and the specific ask will come back in October with more details.
Well, I will, Commissioner Spreen, I will offer my direction that I hope this comes back with all the changes that Mr. Snow has put forth, and I would also echo both George and Mark's comments that in this coming month, if you have a chance to look through the station for other places where modernization is needed, I would encourage it, bring that back next month as well.
On hold deal.
I would also say that the, so the, the front entrance and its use for ADA compliance is certainly one that I would look at to see if there's a more useful way to make that space work. But in this preceding month, I would say find, but let's take this opportunity to really make the station what it needs to be. In 20 years, if the first chance we've really learned, or had a chance to say what works and what doesn't work, let's fix those two. But I certainly strongly agree with all the changes Mr. Snow has put forth. I look forward to seeing those come back to us next month.
This is Duffy speaking. May I just add one thing? Can you tell me, Mr. Snow, is it possible that they fixed the wall yet outside on the deck? Has that been repaired? I mean, I hate to bring it up, but we've been waiting and waiting for that thing to get done for the several months, if not a year. Did that, Mr. Snow, are you familiar with that issue?
Yes, I am, Commissioner. It, to my knowledge, the job has been completed. There may have been one or two small pieces that the contractor was waiting for, but to my knowledge, it's good to go.
That's fabulous. Thank you. Big help.
Well, we got hit by a car.
Yeah.
All right. So any other comments from the commissioners, input from the commissioners?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yeah, Melvin.
Is it possible that, you know, when we look at this, maybe it's usual customary for the B C to have its own dorm enclosed. Maybe if we look at that lobby, long as we meet that ADA compliance piece of it, that the B C actually has his or her own quarters where his, his or her dormitory is attached to a restroom, and that's what I'm usually, where, you know, they basically have their own, their own room, so.
That's interesting.
And that, that puts things in, you know, the state of the art fire stations. Dormitory to every part, each and every fire personnel had their own individual dormitory, and that, that helped in a lot of things like, for instance, snoring, right, and then privacy, you know, visions and things like that, so. If we can look at that while we're looking at things, and if the space allows it, then, you know, I would, I would say look at something like that as well.
Good. That's good.
All right. Any comments from the public at this time?
Alan has a question.
Yes, Alan.
This is Alan Epstein. I'd like to ask the question about the contract between the district and the Central Fire Department. Section 6.2.8 talks about remodeling and expansion. We've had this conversation before. My interpretation of 6.2.8 is that the fire department is responsible for paying for these things, not that the fire district is responsible for paying, so I'd be interested to hear from the attorneys what their interpretation of section 6.2.8 is. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. Rob, your first homework assignment.
That's, that's fair enough. I'm happy to look into that. I, it sounded like in Dave Snow's presentation that he anticipated that because he was talking about the authority of the, of the chief for the Central Fire District, as well as going to the board if it exceeded a certain amount of authority, which is what the process is for Central Fire District, but I'll look into that issue and, and let you know my legal analysis and response.
Thank you. All right. So any further comment from the public? All right. So with that, so Dave, I think your marching orders are, you go, do your, continue your analysis, work with district staff, General Manager Logan, to put, bring forward a full proposal for agenda and action at the October meeting.
That sounds fantastic, and if I could just close with my comments that any type of project that we manage is following the county's public health orders related to COVID for construction practices and activities. Currently, we're doing several projects in different fire stations, and all of our contractors are compliant. I would like to say that I appreciate the comments about the ADA accessibility. Whenever a building undergoes renovations that become improvements, we have to be very careful that we don't trigger modern code requirements over certain thresholds. So we'll be working with the architect to come up, and I do look forward to coming back to the board with a full report.
Great. Thank you, Dave. All right. We'll now move to item seven B and seven C, which are the, the August 2020 and the September, July 2020 and August 2020. Chief Report, Assistant Chief Glass, please provide your reports.
Good evening again. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dave, for that presentation. Really appreciate you putting that together and look forward to working with you as we move forward to the October meeting. Okay. July, thankfully, was a relatively slow month, no significant events, and we'll go to the next page. We did have three small incidents, two of them were cooking fires, and one was a gas meter that did catch on fire outside of a structure, which resulted in the combined three incidents, approximately $15,000 in fire loss and damage. We're slightly off our target for year-to-date calls. You can see at this time last year, 572 for the Los Altos Hills Fire District. We attribute that to the COVID-19 shelter-in-place orders, which is a little bit off our target. As things began to pick back up, you can see month over month, the calls remained consistent at 63, and the month before were 62, and May was 66. Again, we're seeing relatively depressed numbers due to the COVID and shelter-in-place orders that were in the county. The one good and positive thing for that is response times are below the threshold that we're looking for, which is 7 minutes 59 seconds. You can see that we didn't have any late calls during this month. The pie chart breaks down the total amount of calls and by type. Again, shooting for that 50% to 16% mark for EMS-related calls, our service calls, pulling power lines down, hazardous situations, pickup and put-backs, public service assists, picked up 30% of our call volume. And then approximately 8% were fires, and that includes the three that were caught in the dollar-loss index. Again, the community risk program, that's an auto-population that pops in here with all COVID, due to COVID, all of the activities were canceled. So those numbers should all be zeros. Apologize for that.
All right. That's July. How do we do for August?
Okay. This is the map showing where the three incidents were. We'll transition to the August report here shortly. August was a little bit of a different month. Obviously, we had the lightning storm come in on August 16th, created a significant amount of calls for us. You're going to see an uptick in the August calls. It also started the CZU lightning complex, which indirectly posed a limited threat to the district. Was in brief communication with General Manager Logan, as was Fire Chief Tony Bowden, as we began to work with the sheriff's office on our evacuation plan and our warning eventually due to the weather conditions that were threatening to push the fire in a north-easterly direction towards the district of 35 and Page Mill intersection. So I'll talk a little bit more about that after the report, but again, no significant responses within the district. Next page. Again, still off the mark for the calls, but you can see a definite uptick in August. This uptick is attributed to the lightning event and the windstorm and the power lines down that we saw, you know, mid to late August. Again, response times looked really good. You can see all of the first duty units were below 7 minutes 59 seconds. And see, call volume average, again, draw a little bit of decrease in EMS calls, and you can see the uptick in service calls, and that's attributed to the lightning and severe weather that we faced. Dollar loss value was $3,150. That was due to a kitchen. We had a small cooking fire. It was contained to the cooking vessel, so that means it stayed within the pot and/or the stove, but it did damage the cabinets within the structure. So that's where we got the dollar loss value there for the fire, and then that will be shown on the next page on the map. So this fire was actually the one here in Loyola's area, kind of on the southwest side of the district. A couple of little things we're going to talk about tonight in addition, any questions on the report? I apologize.
Any questions, commissioners? All right. Anything from public? All right, Chief Glass, go ahead.
Okay. I was asked briefly to just talk about our ZonHaven product that the County of Santa Clara had gone ahead and kept Santa, central fire district secured in advance of a county-wide grant. So we did receive funding from the Shushgap and UWASI to fund a regional evacuation program called ZonHaven. And I did send a brief one-and-a-half-minute video link to Sarah, and I'm not sure if that's available to, for us to watch, but that'll give us a really good overview of the product. And we'll begin with the video, and then I'll talk a little bit about it.
Did everyone see the video?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Oh, there's supposed to be audio with it.
Did a guy just die on you, Sarah?
My major's reshare. I think I forgot to click the optimization button. Hang on. Let me know if you can't hear it again.
(inaudible) firing evacuation order. (inaudible) firing evacuation order.
When seconds matter.
Fires that move incredibly fast, that actually force people to run from their homes, have become the new normal in California.
The wildfires of the last few years burned so fast and so hot, gathering around a paper map to discuss evacuation plans once a wildfire has already broken out, waste precious minutes. Wildfires like the Camp Fire highlight the critical need for smart evacuation plans.
This isn't a fire that we can fight right here. This is what we fear in Santa Clara County is a large damaging wind-driven fire.
It's going to bring emergency evacuations into the modern age. Introducing ZonHaven, a standardized emergency evacuation platform.
This is the first platform of its kind. It's the first to be deployed in the Bay Area.
Notifying first responders and San Mateo County residents the moment an evacuation is ordered.
The moment it's called for, dispatch can see it, the public can see it, the first responders are all looking at the same map.
When every minute counts.
Firefighters want to know how fast and how far the fire is going to travel. Law enforcement wants to know which roads do I need to open up and create one-way or two-way traffic controls?
And San Mateo County residents want to know if they need to evacuate, which roads are safe, and where to go.
Been able to harness the local knowledge in every individual jurisdiction and agency, put it on a platform that everybody's using the same language and technology, all with the goal of ensuring that people get out quickly, they get out safely, and they have the exact same information that first responders do in those critical moments.
Okay, great. Thank you. And you can see that the trailer on that video there says coming summer 2020. So we did receive it in summer of 2020, and it was going through its initial draft stages of zone review with the local fire department. Battalion Chief Tyler Mortensen, Paul Morgan, our GIS specialist, Captain Chris Ingram, were working through and had gone through the initial first pass at the zones, at the creation of the zones. There are several phases where we involve stakeholders, and the first part of that is the emergency services group sits down with the, for us, it would be Los Altos PD, because there's some sections in there. It will be the sheriff's office, and it is Los Gatos, Bonner, Sereno Police. Those are the ones that are affected by the ZonHaven platform. It's basically all of the communities that are to the west of 280 and 85. That was the amount of money that we had available within our budget to secure for ZonHaven. Those are also the areas that are in the high and very high severity WUI area. So we purchased this program, we sat down, we did our first pass, and before we had an opportunity to even have a stakeholder meeting, we had a large fire in Santa Cruz County that was threatening Los Altos Hills Fire Protection District, as well as Santa Clara County. So Captain Rich Arena and myself from the sheriff's office sat down, and we said, we have nothing, or we have this draft version of ZonHaven to go ahead and use along with 35 corridor, Skyline, and Bear Creek, and into the Redwood Estates area, Summit Road. So we decided that we would select the zones using the ZonHaven tool, where we interface with that to go ahead and provide us a barrier if the fire were to be impacted by weather and blow over the county line. And we, we worked cohesively and cooperatively with the sheriff's office to decide to go ahead and do a evacuation warning on that corridor within Santa Clara County to give our residents adequate time to prepare in advance of the weather that could be pushing the fire in their direction. This is to help the folks with large animals and pets evacuate, as well as those with functional needs, the extra inadequate time that they need to be able to secure their property and evacuate in a safe and orderly manner. Three days later, the weather event passed, and we were able to roll back. What's nice about this product is it puts all of us on the same page. It uses a GIS layer, which allows us to be able to integrate some of those zones to our alerting system that is operated by the Office of Emergency Management and then administered by county communications. So we can go ahead and utilize the iPass feature and be able to disseminate that information quickly and timely to the community. This is, again, it's in its early, early stages, and we were forced to have to make a decision to use nothing, or the old style where you get on a map and you draw with a Sharpie, and that becomes zone one and two, which has worked for many years. That was done on the SCU lightning fire on the opposite side of the county. But there's no way for anybody to interface with that through a portal. Community.zonhaven.com was stood up. You can still Google ZonHaven now and scroll down to the CZU page and actually see the 11 zones that Los Altos Hills has pre-scripted. And again, that's in their very first draft. They have not even been reviewed by the sheriff's office at this point. So we'll sit down with those stakeholders, go through the emergency operations piece, and then obviously bring it to the board and to members of the town to be able to see how those zones best fit their community. And that's where we take into considerations like CERT zoning and other zones that are already pre-created or pre-established within the communities. So at this point, it was a very, very rough draft that we had, thankfully, available to use, which made it literally a mouse click away. That's how fast we were able to execute an evacuation advisory, warning, or order. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Estimated timeline for rollout, again, with all the large fires, we're slightly off target. We were hoping to have our first stakeholder meeting in September. That's now been pushed off due to the fact that, you know, our lead, Chief Mortensen, has been deployed several times to do different fires around the state. But we expect it to be a project that we move full scheme ahead this winter.
Great. Thank you, Chief Glass. Any questions for the commissioners?
I have a question. Duffy speaking. Are you working with the CERT? Did you include CERT people, like Dave Stewart and Neil Katton? Our primo supervisors?
Yeah, Commissioner Price, that is part of the stakeholder meetings. We haven't had them yet due to the fact of the timing, but they will definitely be, input will be received from them as we move forward at our stakeholder meetings.
That's terrific. Thanks. Great job.
You're very welcome.
Any other comments, questions for commissioners? Anything from the public?
Drew Anderson has a comment.
Go ahead, Drew.
Thank you. Chief Glass, in Los Altos Hills, I think Duffy was kind of referring to that with the CERT program they, we put in place, the zones. For instance, I wanted to make a point for our Zone 2, where we had our initial wildland fire evacuation Sunday. At one point, we were, Zone 2 was part of a, we had more attachments to it, Beleri Ranch area, for instance, but the idea to keep Zone 2 just saddle mountain was, from a logistics aspect, we, we aren't that big of a mountain, we're only several hundred feet, but just to, you know, transportation to get back and forth to, from either a CERT standpoint or just a community standpoint, down to the Beleri Ranch and have that all one zone, we asked that that could be just a separate zone. So Zone 2, Stirrup, Saddle Mountain, et cetera. And my question is, would that be taken into consideration when you're rezoning, or would you be changing those dramatically?
So the evacuation zoning is completely separate at this point, and doesn't take into any consideration the current CERT zoning. And I think that was, what we were given was built on GIS layers and road layers, which would, using a prediction software that ZonHaven has, where fires would start, which would be the best zone, so that we look at traffic control points, we look at ingress and egress, we look at which way the fire department would be responding from. And then, of course, the factor that is the most challenging is always the weather. It isn't like when we do flood planning. We do a lot of planning with cities and OEM about floods and evacuation routes. It's very predictable where the water is going to go. But we saw on the Camp Fire that the fire actually was blowing downhill, that the wind was trumping the slope and the natural nature of fire to want to burn uphill. So that is one of those things, like, we don't necessarily want to have pre-designated escape routes. We want to have zones that we can notify people early so that they can get out in advance. We want to couple that with our Ready, Set, Go program that the district's been doing. I think it's, it's the next step in the chain, but absolutely, I think, we want to find a way to make it easy for residents and constituents to be able to identify which zone they're in and when they need to evacuate. And sometimes, it is possible to integrate the evacuation zones into the pre-established CERT zones, but they look at things differently. But a lot of the points that you're making are things that we do look at, like ingress, egress, traffic control points. A lot of that, a lot of that activity is taken into account.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Anything else from the public?
Dave Stewart?
Dave, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I just want to say that I personally would not recommend that we focus too much on the CERT zones. They seem to be kind of arbitrary, and I would agree that for evacuation, we'd want to consider different zones. And I had a question about ZonHaven versus a different map set I discovered during the fires that was also an ArcGIS.com map set from the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, and they had a CZU/SCU fire map. And is this the same technology? Because I found this to be wonderful.
I'm, without having a chance to see it, Mr. Stewart, I can't speak to the Mid Peninsula mapping, but we did use an ArcGIS for hosting to make it accessible to everyone in the different counties. I know that Mid Peninsula was present at the evacuation meetings that we held twice daily in Santa Cruz. Myself, as well as Lieutenant Neil, gosh, I can't remember his last name, but he's Rich Arena's number two on the west side, were present at both of those meetings each day, making sure that Santa Clara was represented. And I know Brad from Mid Peninsula was there through the entire initial week, and then as it started to not be a threat to Santa Clara, Neil Valenzuela, Lieutenant Valenzuela, and Brad stopped attending the meeting because there wasn't really a need for them to be present. But a lot of the information is being shared through ArcGIS, and that's, that's a wonderful platform that we use for our GIS software.
Yeah, I would agree. I liked it.
Well, thank you.
All right. Anything else from the public? All right. Thank you, Chief Glass. We will now move on to item eight, which is General Manager Report. So let's go ahead with item 8A, which is the district website, 8B, which is the OK Resources sign, methods of delivery, and 8C, which is the September National Emergency Preparedness Month. We've got an open mic somewhere, and it's really cool. All right, you got it. Thank you, Sarah. And then finally, September, which is National Emergency Preparedness Month. General Manager Logan, please provide your update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll pick up the pace here, and we'll go through these slides very quickly because the slide really gives the information that's necessary. Special Project Services Department, we'll discuss the district website, which is the first four slides. And then on slide five, Commissioner Price, would you just speak quickly about the event that was held this week from the Los Altos Hills?
Excuse me. I see Janice and Terry are unmuted, and that might be the source of the audio problem.
Okay.
If we could have Janice and Terry change themselves.
That was wrong.
Okay, that cleared. Okay. So Sarah, would you go ahead with your presentation on the first four slides? And then Commissioner Price, would you comment about slide five?
Yes. You guys can see my slides, right? Everyone is sounding very garbled, so I just want to make sure you can see everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So I'll go ahead and get started with the revisions to the district website. I'll go through these really quickly. The most important one, I think, really is this banner that we've added to the top The most important one, I think, really is this banner that we've added to the top of the website, which is a direct link to our most recent updates on emergencies like the wildfires. There are a number of different places where you can access this information throughout the website and that redundancy is intentional. So people visiting our site will have an easy time finding that information when they need it. We've also added a strategic planning update page, which is accessible through the link under latest updates on the homepage. It includes all the materials from the two community meetings that we've had and we'll update this as the process progresses. We also had some feedback that the CWPP, Annex 4 and Addendum were difficult to find on our site, so we've added it to the dropdown menu of the About the District page. Commissioner Kearney and Captain Gluhan gave a wonderful community presentation to the Los Altos Hills Club, and I believe Duffy will talk about that, so I'll just skip it for now. And then I wanted to give you a quick update on our social media accounts. We haven't been following this, tracking this information very closely, but I wanted to point out this considerable increase in our followership over the past month. And a lot of that is because of the wildfires and all of the situations that we've had going on in the county lately. And it's really important that if any commissioners or anyone in your network is following our page or has a social media account and isn't following our page, that they start following it. I think that, you know, we want to connect with everyone in the district, but if we can connect with just one person who takes action because of some content that we share, then our social media is a really successful strategy. And then finally, I'll finish up here at the OK Cards and Cover Letter. We had initially thought that we would just put these cards on our website and allow people to download as they, as they saw fit, but we had some direction to look at cost estimates for printing and mailing the cards. The cost estimates are before you on the screen and UPS provided a final estimate to me today, which was $16,097, not including tax. So definitely the highest estimate out of the four that I was able to secure. So I'm seeking direction tonight from the commission as to whether you'd like to print and mail the cards, which vendor you want to use, or if you want to just post it on the social media channels on our website, or if you would like to do a combination of both. And sorry, I have one last slide. Just a reminder that September is National Emergency Preparedness Month. We've been sharing posts on our social media accounts this month and for the rest of the month, we're sharing a post almost every day, thanks to the great toolkit provided by Santa Clara County OES. And please amplify these messages if you have your own social media accounts. We would love to get the word out so people can start getting prepared. It's very timely, as you all know. That's the end of my report. I'll go back to Slide 5 for Commissioner Price whenever she's ready.
Okay, great.
Go ahead, Duffy.
Oh, thank you. Just to let you know that Commissioner Kearney and Captain Gluhan gave a tremendous presentation on September 8th jointly, and it was wonderful. And basically, Commissioner Kearney, as you probably know, was a member of the SARS group that worked on the campfire in Paradise, and it was in Paradise. It was absolutely heartwarming to see all the things that the SARS group did and basically also very emotional, as a matter of fact, to all of my people that listened to it. This was presented before the Los Altos Hills Club of Los Altos Hills and the Newcomers Club of Los Altos, Los Altos Hills. And the remarks were excellent. People were very impressed and very pleased. Captain Gluhan described beautifully the entire new forward-looking community resiliency plan and mainly the IHFR chart that she presented. She broke it down to explain what our services are, and she'll be going into more of that, I'm sure, tonight. But at any rate, both presentations were outstanding and very well received. The recording of the proceedings is recorded via Zoom, which is really excellent. And today it is being mounted and with captions and will be on YouTube on the website from the Los Altos Hills Club. And we will be sharing that with everyone. And by the way, this is another good thing using Zoom with these recordings. If you put them on YouTube, they're automatically captioned and can be converted into other languages. So that's a real attribute to having the Zoom meetings. So again, thank you to Commissioner Kearney and to Captain Gluhan for a terrific presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. I wanted to mention that we've taken the presentation that was presented to the Los Altos Hills Club and with the assistance of Sarah and her technical skills, digested it down to six minutes of soundbites. We don't have time to show it tonight, but that would be something that can be used for strategic planning purposes and for other purposes for audiences. So we're trying to make our videos, make them very, very short and easy to watch. I wanted to go back to the slide, Sarah, on the OK Card as to how to send it out. And I'm thinking since that this is National Emergency Preparedness Month, maybe we could add that as a letter and go out with the OK Card if that's the direction of the district to mail them to all the residences and have it be like a gift or some kind of a recognition of September being the National Emergency Preparedness Month. So any comments or direction from the commission on whether to mail the cards to all residents, have a hybrid, also have it posted on the website? Please, what is your pleasure?
I like to recommend that we, we send them out to all the residents through mail and we do social media and we do what's on our websites as well. And that way, we cover the whole spectrum of participation with the residents. That's my...
My second Melbourne's thoughts.
Okay, just one quick question I would have of legal counsel, if I could ask Rob or Dan to chime in. Do they see anything procurement-wise that we should consider before moving in that direction?
It's an issue that we want to look into. If the direction from the commissioners is to mail them before the next meeting, if that's possible, we'll do it. There's some thought that we may need to come back in October with a more formal proposal or there may be ways through the General Managers Authority or otherwise to do it between meetings, but we're not in a position to take action on the numbers that were presented in the slide during the presentation this evening. But certainly, direction that if it's possible to do it before the next meeting, we can take, and if it's not possible, then similar to the fire station direction, it'll come back with a formal proposal during October.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other feedback from commissioners?
Okay, that would just everyone recognize National Emergency Preparedness Month September, and thank you. That concludes my remarks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jay. All right, with that, we'll move to Item 9A, Events and Activities, 9B, Community Emergency Response CERT Activities, and 9B1, Revitalization of the Arc Hub, and 9B2, Emergency Vest, 9C, Operational Data Collection, Integration, and Mapping Revised Proposal Update, Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, please provide the report.
Thank you. Sarah has the slides and I will try to go through very quickly. I think there's a lot, enough pictures and you can read along with the descriptions. This is some of the key things that we're going to mention tonight. First thing, I just want to really quick show you on the left, I had these signs made so that we could let people know what was going on, especially with everybody heightened and concerned about the word evacuation. So we wanted to make sure that they understood that it was community training that was going on. Next slide. So again, the meetings are pretty much standard that I go to monthly. We've discussed a couple of the meetings already, the club meeting, we've done a Town Council Orientation, Evacuation Workshop, that's actually what's going on tonight also last week, some CERT Coalition Meetings and regular Fire Safe Council Meetings with both project managers and going to their monthly meetings. And then one of the key items that we've worked on over the last six months with the town of Los Altos Hills is the evacuation planning. We're doing some upcoming videos and those are kind of ongoing. Next slide. So we just concluded this last Sunday, the 13th, our first evacuation drill. It actually started back before COVID. We actually met with our first meeting at Town Hall in one of the meeting offices. And that was basically to say, you know, do we want to do this? What does it look like to do an evacuation? Obviously, we're well ahead of the fire danger and evacuation potential that we saw in August. We had several meetings, we had several trainings, and then that culminated with a actual drill. One of the key exercise points of this was to have everyone sign up for early notification. Locally, it's NICSIL, so we activated NICSIL to say that we are doing the evacuation drill. In addition, we put on there, if you'd like more information, please contact us, and gave website and phone number information. Have had a lot of responses of other areas and neighborhoods that are very interested in having a similar event. So we got a little bit of traction out of getting the notification out to the residents to evac and as kind of a branding and marketing of what products we have available. The next step specifically for Saddle Mountain is to work on becoming a firewise community and getting that National NFPA certification, which has an annual recertification and process. We had 40 possible participants in this Saddle Mountain drill in the area that we encompassed. We actually had 18 participants, which is, I think, for a first time, was a very good turnout. You know, it was on a Sunday morning, the residents picked the date and we had a great turnout. You can see a couple of pictures down there in the bottom. Janice Carr, our Commissioner and CERT Ham volunteer, is in her new vest. The residents drove to Person Hills Park, signed in on a sheet, and then were given an evacuation registration form, trying to simulate what being evacuated might look like. Next slide. So I'm going to turn this over to Victoria if she would like to give a report on the CERT activities here inside of this report.
Victoria, you there?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and continue on. And if she can jump on, then great. They've had to postpone several workdays because of unstable weather, but they're working to finishing up, you know, again, we've had that, you know, hit the brake, hit the gas, hit the brakes, hit the gas, hit the brakes with the CERT program and getting the ARC set up again. Things are definitely moving along. Again, for the time that we're in tonight, you can read those extra things that we're doing to maintain the trailers, the ARC, kind of getting everything onto a maintenance schedule and getting people responsible for those items. A vest update, we have received vests. Dave Stewart's been a gracious coordinator to work with distribution along with Neil. We have about half of the vests distributed at this point. There's a picture of that and again, an in-living person of Janice wearing her new vest. She was highly visible, so we are definitely meeting the needs of that. We are still working on the Clear Pocket Edition so that we can have the ID readily available on that vest, but it's a great improvement for visibility. Next slide.
Denise, I'm back on. Sorry, I got kicked out.
All right.
Sorry, everybody. Hello. So activities updates for CERT, our meeting schedule is going to be remaining at two trainings and two meetings a month. We have a general CERT meeting and a CERT supervisor meeting. Our training has been focused a lot on recon during COVID. Obviously, things have kind of changed a little bit. We're going to be asking ECC to be giving their thoughts on that procedure before we put it out. We're doing a three-part series underway for recon and we've got a homework challenge going on right now for looking at some critical infrastructure and hopefully I'll have a really great report for you guys next time on how well that went. We also had to unfortunately postpone some of our training videos that we were going to start putting up because of the weather. So I'm hoping that next time also have a much better report for you guys on being able to do some more filming and video for some of our ARC activation to get some people to be able to come out and do some of the drills and training that work that are needed.
Great. Hey, Victoria.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you. And then to just finish off this slide, I'm going to ask Sarah, just give a quick update on where we're at on the operational data collection, integration, and mapping.
Sure. So along with Commissioner Spree, staff has met with Lynx Technologies to discuss changes to the proposal that was provided at the last meeting. We recently received that revised proposal based on the discussion that we have and we have plans in the next few weeks to meet with Neil, as was also directed at the last meeting, to review. If time allows, we're hoping to bring, scope and PSA to the commission in October or November. End of report.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks, Sarah. Next slide, please. I think, do we have, is that it for the, oh yeah, this will be another, this will be farther down in the agenda if we can hold those, Sarah.
All right. Thanks, Emergency Services Manager Gluhan. Are there any discussions with the commission on this report? Any comments from the public? Hearing none?
Hang on a second. All right, we'll move on to... Sorry, I just had a second to get unmuted. I just wanted to point out to Sarah that Neil may not be available for a while and that I've also volunteered to help with the mapping. Dave Stewart?
Great, thank you, Dave.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll move to Item 10, which is the Fire Hydrant Report, Item 10A, Horseshoe Lane Erosion Report, Repair Report. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. For comments on the Horseshoe Lane Erosion Repair Project, I'd like to again introduce Jeff Tarantino, who's our engineer with Friar and Loria Engineering Consulting. Jeff is the engineering consultant to the district and will provide an update on the Horseshoe Lane hydrant event and resulting soil erosion that occurred on the district vacant lot. So Jeff, thank you for joining us tonight and please, we're looking forward to your comments.
Great, thank you so much. General Manager Logan and Directors, thank you for having me. Hopefully, can everybody hear me okay? I'm using an older microphone.
You're fine.
Okay, great.
Can you hear you?
Thank you. So first, we wanted to talk about Horseshoe Lane. And Sarah, I don't know if there was, the report was attached to the agenda, which was a separate file from what I, this file is the...
Yes, it was, it was attached. Do you want to display that as well?
Yeah, would you mind?
Yeah, no problem. Go ahead and keep talking and I'll pull it up.
Great. So as Directors will remember, in December 2019, a fire hydrant on Horseshoe Lane was hit. It, water was released causing erosion on the hillside. Due to the time of year, the erosion was essentially led to kind of lay dormant. And we've been kind of taking a look at the area and recently completed a topographic survey to determine kind of the extent of the erosion. In evaluating the topographic survey, if you could go to the second to last page of In evaluating the extent of the erosion and looking at the grading requirements for the town of Los Altos Hills, we have found that the existing slope is, and I apologize, it's kind of an engineering drawing here, but you can see in the, kind of the middle of the drawing, there are kind of oblong and shapes that represent the contours where we found the erosion damage. So within that 40 by 40 foot approximate area, we're finding that the soils are steep and rugged and need to be replaced. And so if we go to the next image, very simply, we're going to implement a grading plan to restore the slope to match the contours and grading outside of the area of repair. In order to proceed with this project, we're going to take a couple of steps. First, FNL will be preparing construction drawings to show the repairs. We will be submitting those drawings to the town of Los Altos Hills in order to secure a grading permit, which is required by their grading ordinance in order to, in order to perform the work. We will be coming back to the commission in October to present the construction drawings. We'll give you a progress update on our coordination with the town of Los Altos Hills. And at that time, General Manager Logan will be requesting authority to issue the project to competitive bid. After we go to competitive bid, we'll follow public contracting codes, secure bids, and then once those bids have been evaluated, we will come back to the commission. The intent is to come back at the November meeting to present the results of the bids and request direction on, and how to proceed, assuming we receive sufficient bids and can deem a lowest responsive bidder. Once we get to that point, we'll proceed with the work, which at this point, FNL is estimating it's approximately two weeks worth of work in order to clear and grab the site, restore the grading to stabilize the slope, and then we will provide temporary erosion control measures over the slope. And then we will provide temporary erosion control measures over the slope such that it could, as we, as we will also place a material called hydro seeding, which is essentially a material you use to place seeds that are fast growing with typically native plants. That will ultimately be the permanent erosion control. So that is the end of my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jay. Are there any discussions from the Commissioners on this topic?
Yeah, Jeff, this is Melvin. What do you anticipate this is going to cost? I know we haven't got any bids on it yet, but what do you think it's going to cost?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Director. Sarah, would you mind scrolling up? We actually included our initial opinion of probable project cost. There's a table on, I think it's, there it is, right there at the bottom. So, so what we've, what we've estimated for construction based on similar work in the area and our experience of approximately $48,000 for the construction. The design fee there is the fee that FNL's, under our on-call agreement, is, is our projected work for topographic survey and our design fee. The permitting fee is our estimate based on reviewing the fees from the, from the town's website. And then construction management is again, an estimate on our part. It would be potentially for FNL to assist the district with managing the construction contract and providing periodic inspection of the work. And District Administration Fee is just an estimate that we provide. So the total opinion or probable cost is there, Director, at sixty-two thousand four hundred.
Gotcha. And so what's the, what would be the pros and cons of doing nothing other than adding like straw and wattle down at the bottom of the road and eliminating the cost?
So, so currently, there is a, I don't want to use a significant, but a fairly rut that's adjacent to the road. So what our concern would be is that soil, if it got wet significantly again, just from rain, even though there are some, there are grasses that have established and, and you know, it appears to be in reasonable condition. My concern is that over time, that soil will continue to be destabilized and eventually could, could result in further erosion and soil displacement. And with the proximity to the road and some of the trees, it, you know, over time, it could become a larger concern, kind of requiring a larger repair in the future.
Gotcha. So it appears that besides just grading, you'll have to do a lot of compacting as well, probably, huh?
Yeah, we will. And so what we're, what we're developing is likely using some excavation and benching to create opportunities to place probably a couple of feet of Class II AB, so more of a kind of an engineered fill. And as we do the grading and building the bench, we're actually going to try and save some of the native soils there that will be then placed over the aggregate base. So that aggregate base would kind of serve as a stabilizing material. It's much like what we do when we're building roads. We want to have this kind of this aggregate base we can compact and, and get it to be a very, very stable surface that we can then put soil that's more appropriate for plantings on top of it, you know, a foot or two, using the hydro seeding and then Juttnash metting that we'll place over the top of it for the erosion control to allow that, the plants to establish and kind of hold the top soil together.
Copy. Now, do you think you have to put keyways in as well?
Yes, we're thinking we're probably going to put a small keyway at the bottom and one about halfway, halfway up the slope, but we're still developing those details at this point.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Any further questions? Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
Yes, I just wanted to point out also to remind the that these, these incidents were, are covered under insurance by the drivers that hit the hydrant and hopefully, we'll be able to present this to the insurance company and receive reimbursement for the cost. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Sure.
Thanks, Jay. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Anyone from the public? All right. Thank you, General Manager Logan. We will now move on to item eleven, which is the hazardous fuel reduction report. Eleven A.
I think you had to go back to ten B.
Oh, yeah, I was getting ahead of myself.
Okay.
Ten B, which is hydrant repairs.
Yes. This is a fascinating report and I just wanted to hear Mr. Tarantino have an opportunity to tell you the other kinds of projects going on with hydrants right now. And particularly this standard detail, which is very, very important to the district to understand. So Jeff, it's all yours. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jay. So the other, the other project we've been assisting the district with is the town of Los Altos Hills is nearly complete with their, I believe what they call their 2020 street resurfacing project. So they've gone through the town in several locations, performing repairs to the street overlays. And as part of that process, when they do the street overlay, they have to identify all the various utility indicators. So manhole covers for the sewer, for the storm drain, and in our case, the covers for our valves. So if you're looking at this, this detail here, in the elevation view, it's the, it's the image to the, to the right. You know, this is their assembly with the blow ground showing the valve and rising up through the burry to the fire hydrant. And you see the call out that says gate valve assembly. There's a little cover that goes on top of that gate valve assembly that essentially is flush with the road. And that, that cover allows firefighters to open up and then operate the gate valve that's buried. So when, when we perform a road resurfacing project, that typically adds thickness to the road. It essentially, you know, in this case, I think they added one to two inches of AC to the, to the surface in order to make the surface drivable and not cause any, any water or any, any, any material from getting and covering the valve cover. The contractor actually has to come back, remove enough asphalt around the valve cover and then raise the valve and then restore the valve by placing, there's actually two to three inches of concrete that actually collared, actually poured around the valve cover to stabilize it. So, so that's, you know, wanted to use this detail from Pristen Hills Water District that shows our fire hydrant. So Grady Paving was performing the work on behalf of the town and they have completed a majority of the work that required raising of six valves for the, for the, for the district, also placing blue dots to the hydrants. And that work has been complete. There's still work to be completed on one final street, Desahara Way, which the town's waiting for the water district to finish up their Tefalena project. So Sarah, would you mind scrolling down to the next page? So after the work was complete, we were asked to do a site visit. And so what you can see here in this photo is a fire hydrant near 12190 Padre Court. And you could see kind of in the, in the kind of the foreground of the photo, the new asphalt surface with the new striping and you could see where the trucks kind of parked in the background. That's, that portion of the street was not resurfaced, so you can tell that, just the color difference. And there was a valve cover there in the, in the, in the, in front of the hydrant. And that valve, you can see where they actually removed some of the new asphalt around the valve cover or they raised it and then placed new asphalt around it to stabilize it. And then what the practice has been for all the district valve covers to be actually painted yellow so that the water district, personal water district can visually distinguish which are our valves versus which are their valves. So I had a couple more photos if we can go to the next one. Again, same condition, fire hydrant behind back curb, the valve was raised and then a blue dot placed. And then one final photo where we did have one of our, our fire hydrants within the limit of work. The valve is actually in the landscaped area, so no valve raising was required on our part. And then the blue dot was placed in the road. So that was, again, work we're coordinating with, with district staff and the town of Los Altos Hills. And Jay and I just thought it was important information to share with the commission.
Yes, and Jeff, I think it demonstrates those three photos underneath the ground is where the burry is and then the lateral that attaches to the gate valve that then goes up to the cover. And all of those, those pieces of equipment belong to the fire district.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to support and looking forward to continuing work with you. But unless there's anything else, I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting.
Mr. President.
Senator Warren, you are muted.
Mr. President, you're muted.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. All right, let's move to eleven A, which is brush chipping and debris removal program. Pilot project analysis areas four, five, six, and one. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please present the report.
Thank you, President Warren. So before you, as it loads, is a cost summary of the pilot program for March through July. I'll let you look at the numbers there. We did have a little bit of a reorganization of this chart based on the feedback that we received at the last commission meeting. So you can see at the bottom there, the total monthly program costs and then the actual payment to Fire Safe Council. So our total monthly program costs since March is about $103,000. Keep in mind that that does include the $20,000 pre-funding that we provided to FSC in March of this year. The total costs for July are just under $34,000, which is a bit higher than what we had seen in the previous months, but those costs are all due to the contractors, the bids coming in a little bit higher. And on this page, again, we have the operations data. The last section of the table here at the bottom is for July, Area One. You've seen the previous three tables and in the, in the, what, April through June meetings, or April through July. Sixty-nine residents received chipping services in July. Fifty-two hundred cubic yards of brush were chipped. It's a little bit more than what we've seen in the past. The cost per cubic yard of brush did increase to $5.35 this month due to higher bids received from the contractors. End of report.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions on the commission? Any questions from the public? All right. Let's now move to eleven. What do we got here? Jay, what do we got?
Eleven A one, and I'll speak to that.
Yeah, please. Eleven A one?
Yes. So eleven A one is to just give an expression of services for unexpected circumstances. This is regard to the brush chipping program. And at times, we receive calls from residents where unanticipated limbs fall or they need emergency trimming. And in such events, the district can arrange, can make arrangements for that chipping in the next weekly cycle, depending upon the contractor's schedule, the timing of the bids and the location of the property. And some examples that happened this last month were a couple of tree limbs fell that were quite large or trees actually fell. The resident went out, chopped it up, put it into piles and another issue was there was trimming brush off electrical wires and branches behind and the district helped them those up with the chipping. These special circumstance requests are important. Every effort's made to remove piles, however. Also important is the area approach to monthly tripping, chipping, which is the mainstay of the program for national net for maximum efficiency and service and cost. So that's the end of my comments on A one.
Anything for A one?
Moving down to A two, Sarah, do we have a slide on this?
Yes, it should be on your screen, the standards for brush chipping.
Thank you. Yes, so in the new program, the new pilot program, we've established some standards and the standards are there for you. One of them is the contractor safety standard and that has to do with having a spotter designated if the vehicle that the crew is using is in a backup motion. And then the other is the standards for COVID-19, very important. And then there is a third bullet there that talks about the use of good judgment is required of the crews because when they're out there, various things happen and they just are always advised to use good judgment. And then the fourth standard is the chipping. We've had some residents who've said that they don't like the quality of the chips that they're receiving from, that are left behind. And one of the standards that we have is whatever goes into the front of the chipper is going to come out the other side of the chipper. It's not a matter of the setting on the chipper, it's a matter of what goes in. So the expectation is not that we can convert leaves and debris into chipping that is a garden quality. So I just wanted to make those standards aware of, to the commission. In case you receive any comments from residents, you'll have these standards to kind of fall back on and recognize. And then the next.
Great, thank you.
Sure. And then is there another slide there, Sarah, or do we go to three?
Eleven A three.
Yes. We just have two really quick slides, but the commission is happy to read them on their own. It's just some observations from Emily Drain, our FSC representative, a few of the issues that we've run into or that she's run into while actually implementing the program. But they're really only a handful each month. For example, not having contact information on mail-in cards, locked gates, multiple piles and then cancellations, which you saw on the operation slide that I provided. And then just a brief update of some process improvements that we've done to the program. So we actually got a business reply permit. Previously, we were prepaying for all of the registration cards. Now we're only paying for the cards that are returned to us, which should be a pretty significant cost savings. We streamlined the chipping calendar so that people are not seeing as big a window between when they receive the registration cards and when chipping actually begins. Hopefully, that'll eliminate anyone misplacing the card or forgetting to register by the deadline. And then, of course, as one of the problems mentioned previously, that people weren't providing their information on the cards. We just highlighted that language in the mailers and inform residents that their service might be denied if they don't provide that information. End of report and no more slides on this item.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
All right. So Jay, we now moving to eleven A three, written authorization for approval of payments over $30,000 for brush chipping services. General Manager Logan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So what occurred, because Corey, Sarah and I very closely monitor the bids that are coming in from contractors, we did some simple math and we realized that in the, in this last month, in the month of July, that it looked like we were going to be billed for over $30,000. The, the agreement with fire, with the brush chipping agreement with Fire Safe Council has a max limit per month at $30,000. Now, we have not received those invoices yet. And so as far as our invoices received, we're not over the $30,000. But I wanted to bring that to the attention of the Commissioners. And in that section of the compensation of the professional services agreement, there is a opportunity to provide written authorization for approval of payment over $30,000 for the brush chipping services. And I can have Dan Siegel or Rob Quello to comment on that. But we do need to work out some kind of an arrangement. And then in October, the plan is to come back with a different, probably an amendment to that agreement to where we're not on a monthly basis because we're not able to really gauge and react quickly enough as to all the demand for chipping and the cost of the chipping through the bidding process. So that's an introduction to eleven A three. And Dan, Rob, if you want to make comment with me opening that question to you. Thank you.
Rob, do you want to go?
Dan?
Well, go ahead, Dan, if you've got anything to say, otherwise I'm happy to jump in.
Yeah, I think it's, General Manager Logan pointed out, the contract allows for pre-authorization. So we're looking in how to do that if indeed billing comes in at over $30,000 a month. And more importantly, as she stated, to determine how to watch this, especially in this time where there's greater chipping because of heightened awareness, because of the fires and people being at home and having the time to do it. We want to encourage items to keep properties safe and practice hygiene and figure out the best way to enable that to happen and what type of authorization would be necessary to process these bills if indeed they do come in in the amount that Sarah and Jay expect them to.
Thank you.
And to add that, to that, you know, obviously, among the options would be increasing the amount above the 30,000, having the, as Jay indicated, having the time period be like a quarterly basis instead of a monthly basis such that if there was a significant amount in the month of September, but lighter and but lighter in October, you might be within the agreed-upon and acceptable range at the end of a quarter. There'll be multiple options, which we can assess from a legal perspective, then present to you all in October.
Great. Thanks, Rob.
But I will then go ahead and send a written authorization, if that is all right, to Fire Safe Council, just indicating that there is, that it is okay to make payment over $30,000 if indeed we receive any invoices over $30,000. Is that what I take from this conversation?
Do you need direction or a motion?
For the approval from the commission or do you need it from legal? Jay?
No, I'm just disclosing because it's already in the agreement to be able to do this. And so just wanting to disclose that that's the plan I would take unless there is some reason not to do that.
I'm in favor of being able to, you know, approve payment over $30,000 if necessary. Any feedback from other commissioners?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. So a consensus there to...
Consensus of the commission.
Yeah, to use that phrase that's already in the agreement. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If people want to bring it, we want to chip it.
Yes, we do. Yeah. There'll probably be a policy discussion at some point in time is to, if it's just open-ended, and then how we control costs if there is a desire to do that. But I think we're on a good track of encouraging and seeing the response from the community, seeing the need from the community, always finding that this is a fire-safe practice is to rid the environment as much as possible from fire fuels. And so I think we're on the right track, and that's what the program's all about. So, thank you. End of my report on item 11.
11A3?
Yeah.
11A. Now let's move to 11B, which is the Home Ignition Zone Services Program. Emergency Services Coordinator Gluhann?
Yeah, so I'm not going to take a bunch of time on this slide. This is the, I want to also introduce, there's, let me make sure he's still on here. Eddie, is Eddie still on here?
Yes.
We're so late. He is. Okay. So Eddie Sanchez has replaced JR as our project manager, and he's underneath Jeff, who is the new overall project manager. He's doing the majority now of the workload of our home ignition zone inspections. Back in November, when we originally talked and I introduced Fire Safe Council in their suite of educational, at the residential level, programs. These were the 60 programs that we purchased. Giving an update on that, to date, 46 have been completed. These might, these numbers were as of last week, so he's actually probably done a couple more. 13 pending and two were canceled. So that gets us right at 60. It's 59 when you do those numbers. So that's been a well-accepted program, a well-utilized program, even under COVID, which has been a little bit of a challenge. I want to thank Eddie for going out, have very positive feedback. I was going to give you some other information about people who've emailed me and told me that, you know, they thank you for the report. We're going to go out and have, you know, do the work ourselves or have a garden to get started. And we've also seen that increase, some of the chipping that we just discussed. But this is what they get. These are the tops of the two forms that they receive. So I just wanted to kind of give you, in case you forgot what the home ignition zone inspection is. And then we'll look at maybe getting some more of these sometime soon because we only secured 60 initially because we weren't sure what we were going to need. Can we do the next slide? Eddie, did you have anything you wanted to say about the HIZs really quick since we're on that before we go to this?
Overall, it's been a good progress, a lot of good feedback I've received. So overall, I think it's a great program provided for the residents. And as far as I know, it's a free program until the end of this year. Starting next year, we're going to start charging for that service.
Yeah, just to update, we, you, we are actually charging because we aren't in the wooie. We do pay for those 60 now, so we'll have to contract for more. It currently is free to all the, no cost to all the residents currently. But that's because the fire district had purchased those 60.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, along with the workshops that we've been doing, the Wildland evacuation workshops, and then some more community workshops that we would like to do once we figure out how to do that inside COVID. Another part of that collaboration that we started with the Fire Safe Council was to do the shaded fuel breaks. We had the Fire Safe Council's monthly meeting today. Chief Laurie talked, and Chief Stansum from the Santa Cruz Fire, and they spoke of how well the fuel breaks performed in both of these fires, especially in Santa Cruz, the shaded fuel breaks. But the time to do a shaded fuel break is not with an approaching fire. You know, so it's not, the time to do it is when there's not fire, you're not under evacuation. It's, the time to do it is outside of those periods of time. But they were very effective. I know on Highway 17, they had a car fire in an area where they had a more severe outcome when the shaded fuel break wasn't in place. So it's definitely an important egress in evacuations. That was the other component he spoke to. The areas that had the shaded fuel breaks did definitely make evacuation safer. And I think that shows in the numbers of only the one death up at the CZU fire, and that was somebody who waited far too long from a very extended evacuation. So in that, we're working now to get Phase Two of the shaded fuel break started, and I'll let Eddie speak to the Phase Two component, and then we'll get down to the bottom picture after that. Eddie?
Yes, so Phase Two would be from Altamont Circle all the way to Via Montana Way, and that's approximately 0.6 miles. And it's just one of our typical escape routes where we try to thin out the areas, limit the trees up to 14 feet high, making sure there's visibility with oncoming traffic and other pedestrians such as bicyclists and other means of road transportations. Overall, I'm in the planning stages of getting bids. I would estimate the amount would be around $15,000 to $20,000. And I have sent out bids to the contractors and to get bids on traffic control as well.
Thanks, Eddie.
Great.
And we'll give you more information as we get those RFPs and whatnot for the next meeting, but I just wanted to let you know, since we've come back, missed, we missed a meeting, we didn't have meetings last month, and then with the management audit and whatnot, staff hours have been a little bit delayed on some of these projects. So again, the real importance of those incipient fires, and then especially life safety on evacuations, and then eventually expanding these projects and looking at temporary refuge areas, and, you know, all of the life safety things that we're talking about, the tie-in, you know, exactly with the evacuations that we did, the practice that we did up on Saddle Mountain. All of that's to prepare a resilient population that's trained and knows why we're doing what we're doing and what routes to use and how to get out safely. So we're really, you know, really, really, the education with the Zone Haven incorporating that, you know, as we improve these, you know, these routes into those plannings, to look at those and identify the highest need areas and work towards those. So just continue working on with this, and we'll keep collaborating with County Fire and Fire Safe Council for those next stages. All right, to the last item here, and I know we're very late, so I will go quickly on this. And this kind of ties in with the, with our report from the engineers earlier. One of the items, I went out to look at the hydrant issues, found the problem of having an overgrown lot that we have on our parcel at 27500 Rassidero Road. You can see a couple pictures there. That's a dead fruit tree up in a corner. This is an oak tree that has dead vegetation and is a lot of ladder fuel down to the ground. We walked around, if you look to that far corner, you can see 14 little dots. Eddie has made a map. We walked around, and each of those are unique sites that we're going to do some sort of vegetation management. We're going to interface with Jackson, who's the videographer, and bring in Emily to make it a really comprehensive lateral and vertical fuel vegetation educational video presentation and clean up our lots. So it's kind of a demonstration lot of, you know, here's something in your area that we've gone in and cleaned, and I recognize that we needed a little bit more love than mowing. Typically, it just gets mowed. And then in addition, we do have the erosion that's going to be worked on eventually, but that's not included in any of this report. This is just vegetation or hazardous fuel management. And there's the mix of everything. There's grasses, brush, trees, you know, anything you can think of. We're going to have quite a video montage of different types of fuel management and fuel reduction. And Eddie, you want to talk to, speak to the costs that we have so far?
We've gotten three bids back, and they range between $4,000 and $6,000.
So the other component that will happen with that, as it's a little bit higher than just doing the work because they're going to have to coordinate with videography to, it'll be a little slower than, say, just go clean this lot. We want to show what we're doing when we talk about a ladder fuel, removing the ladder fuels. And again, we can break these down into small videos to put on our YouTube site, again, to give people that educational component that might help them in their own neighborhood because this is what their neighborhood looks like. This is the vegetation they have growing in their property. It's not looking at the conifers up in the Sierras and saying, this is what you should do to your parcel for fuel mitigation. So kind of, we're able to, a little bit of sloping, we're able to address all those items. End of my report for that, if there's any questions on any of these three items. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. I'm looking forward to the product there on the district lot. And thank you, Eddie, for moving forward on Phase Two of the shaded fuel break. All right, is there any comments or questions from the commissioners on Items 11? Any from the public? All right, hearing none. We will now move to Item 12, Adoption of Resolution 20-29 of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, authorizing execution of an agreement between the County of Santa Clara and Los Altos Hills County Fire District for Executive Legal Services. Items 12 and 13 are related. We will begin with Item 12A, Memorandum Report. General Manager Logan, please provide the report. You're muted, Jay.
Sorry. Thank you, President. The memorandum report, which is 12A, establishes the purpose and background for the Resolutions 20-29 and 20-30 and the recommendations before the commission. I'll provide additional comments under each item. So that's just my introductory statement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, General Manager Logan. Moving to 12B, which is Resolution 2029, Resolution of Los Altos Hills County Fire District, authorizing execution of an agreement between the County of Santa Clara and Los Altos Hills County Fire District for Executive Legal Services. General Manager Logan, please introduce the resolution.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The adoption of Resolution 20.29 authorizes execution of an agreement between the County of Santa Clara and the District for Exclusive Legal Services. The Management Audit Report recommended direction to the District to discontinue representation by private counsel and to use county counsel as its exclusive representative to provide district legal services. The District is a dependent district of the county and is subject to the findings and recommendations of the management audit process as directed by the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. In the District's post-audit report plan, the District Commission Ad hoc Management Audit Subcommittee agreed to this recommendation and requested immediate assignment of county counsel to the District due to the upcoming management audit proceedings and pending legal matters. The county responded by assigning county counsel and offered the exclusive legal services agreement between the county and the district effective August 19, 2020. Approval of Resolution 20-29 is recommended by the Subcommittee to the Commission. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
All right. Any questions for General Manager Logan from the commission?
Is this time for comment as well as question?
Go ahead, Roger.
Normally, I would, I would have no problem with this. In fact, I recognize that transitions of this sort happen all the time, and I'm happy to have someone else onboard to help us proceed the way we, with all our mission here. But given that this is tied in with the consolidation issue in which we find ourselves at somewhat, at odds with county, is it, does this put Mr. Quello in a spot where he is not necessarily able to deal with us in our questions about our legal dealings with the county? Is there any issue there? Again, if this were just the audit findings and how we manage ourselves, I see no issue. Just seems like for the next two months, we have an issue where we might need legal representation that doesn't have any conflict with who Mr. Quello's ultimate employer is.
I can speak to that. And prior to bringing this resolution to you, the, the Commission Ad hoc Management Audit Subcommittee met on a couple of occasions and spoke about this transition, met with Assistant County Counsel Rob Quello, and went through, I think, a series of very forthright and honest questions, many of which spoke exactly to what the concern that you're stating, Commissioner Spree. And at the end of that discussion, there was, I think, a level of understanding as to how the district would receive advocacy and legal advice that is not in conflict with any of the county's proceedings. So I can just say that kind of as a general overview, and then I could maybe ask Rob Quello if he would like to comment a little further, and maybe just talk about the ethical wall and how that is set up to avoid these kinds of circumstances that happen really frequently within the county, with county counsel representing various departments and various activities going on within the county, and how that advocacy is promoted for whomever the client is. Thank you.
I'm happy to provide some information. So Rob Quello, Assistant County Counsel. First of all, as we all heard when Supervisor Semidion presented his comments at the outset of the meeting, which seems like it was a bit ago, but it was, it was the same meeting. I think he made the real point, which is the decision as it relates to delegation of authority and the decision as it relates to consolidation, our political decisions, they're not legal ones. I mean, the legal question is, does, does the board have the authority to revoke the delegation? Yes. I think everybody agrees that. The ad hoc committee agrees with that. It was given by the board, it can be taken away by the board. And so there's no conflict there. That's a political issue that needs to be resolved politically, which is why I think Supervisor Semidion made the comments he did earlier today. As it relates to the consolidation, it's the same issue. It's, I can opine as to whether or not it's legal to provide for some sort of consolidation. The answer to that is yes. The real question is, is it a political one? Will it occur? In terms of advising the district, where I do see the potential for conflict and where we would have an ethical wall set up for certain, would be as it relates to contracts between this district and Central Fire, for example. So you've got a contract with the Central Fire Protection District for services, and what we would set up within our office for certain is, and have it already set it up as an ethical wall such that if I'm advising the district as it relates to the contract with another party, Central Fire, or even if there were a contract with the county, we would set up an ethical wall so that you would get clear, unbiased legal representation as to that legal relationship, which is a contractual relationship with the other party. And similarly, the Fire District, Central Fire, would get county council assigned to them. What that means within our office is I don't have access to Central Fire files as it relates to contracting with Los Altos County, Los Altos Hills, nor would they have access to my files. We don't share information. We've got ethical wall set up throughout the office in multiple types of scenarios. I can give a couple of examples. Although we represent both the DA and the public defender on civil matters, you know, technically, they have conflicts in criminal matters. And to the extent, so the extent we're brought into a criminal matter on behalf of one department, we set up an ethical wall so there won't be the sharing of confidential information or communications among those. More realistically, where it... More realistically, where it would happen is with an elected official. So you've got the elected sheriff, you've got the elected assessor, you've got the elected district attorney, and we're the attorneys for the county as a whole. But it may be that an elected official would, would have interests based on constitutional authority would be different than the county to the extent that we, so right now, for example, there are three attorneys in our office who are advising the sheriff on a specific matter where there may be a conflict with the county board of supervisors. I'm on the side of the ethical wall advising the sheriff. I'm not on the county side of that ethical wall. And so although we, we communicate with respect to things that we can, we don't share confidential information and my client, as it relates to that representation on that issue, because that's where the conflict is, is the sheriff. Since the board of supervisors is essentially, is realistically the oversight body of this entity, in summary, to the extent there's a political dispute, we don't opine on that, we don't get involved in that, we don't advocate on that, that's a political issue. To the extent there are legal issues, if a conflict were to arise, we would set up an ethical wall internally. But as to the two issues that are most significant to you, based on the discussion today, consolidation and the change of delegation authority, those, as I've said, are political and, and our office will speak with one voice as it relates to that because it's, that's, you know, legally, can it be done? And then legally, what are the options in terms of doing it? Those answers are going to be the same no matter who the, who asked the question. I hope, I hope that answers it. And if I didn't answer it as specifically as you'd like, I'm, I'm happy to try to do that.
No, I appreciate the response. One other question, are you assigned to N number of departments where we will be one of them? What's, what is your availability to us?
My availability to, so I'm an Assistant County Counsel. I oversee our, our labor employment work for the county as well as provide legal advice. I'm not assigned to any particular department, although I do provide advice to multiple departments as needs arise. Specifically getting to the basis for your question, as I understand it, if Jay calls me, or the board president calls me, or there's an urgent board issue, I'm going to ensure that I provide you time of legal advice. In addition, the county counsel, James Williams, is working on assigning at a minimum of one additional deputy to, to the representation so that you'll get the same benefit that you've had for years with respect to Dan and his firm and having a minimum of two folks that you can go to. To the extent that other issues arise within our, within the county council's office, we have a little over 100 lawyers now. And so it would not be difficult to find somebody with, for whom there wasn't a conflict if we needed to on an assignment type basis or a specific need type basis, assign someone else if there was a conflict. If there's no conflict, then obviously you've got the full weight of our entire office and on all of its attorneys with respect to legal questions that arise.
Great, thank you, I appreciate the answer.
Good, thanks Roger. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, any questions at this time from the public?
Yes, Alan has a question.
Go ahead, Alan.
Thank you, actually have quite a few questions. I don't know whether there'll be a chance to answer them, but the management audit identified a number of things which the auditor claims were illegal. I'm curious whether the county, county legal counsel participated in those decisions and whether there'll be any subsequent follow-up with regards to those matters. Secondly, I'm interested in finding out whether LAFCO has any, any role in the, in the merger or dissolution, whatever you want to call it, of the district and whether it has to follow any type of LAFCO procedures. And then the last one has to do actually with the, with the fire chief. The, the board of supervisors seem to treat the fire chief as if he's the fire chief for the county. But in actuality, he's only a fire chief for about 10% or 20% of the area of the county. And it's kind of confusing when I listen to the discussions because they ask him questions that have nothing to do with his area, his area of responsibility. So maybe you could explain what the role of the chief of Central Fire Protection District has with regards to the overall county fire program. Thank you.
Would the board like me to respond to the questions?
Yes, please.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. You, I'm not, at the board's discretion, obviously, we can respond to public comment and public questions, so I'm, I'm happy to do it. With respect to the first question, which as I understand it was, was our office involved in the management audit recommendations or, or legal analysis? I think the answer to that simply is, is no. The management auditor, based on the report, recommended that a legal analysis be done by county counsel. That analysis will be done by our office. The ad hoc subcommittee concurred in that recommendation to have county counsel do that analysis. And so that analysis will be done. But if the question was, was it done in advance? The answer is no, the recommendation was in fact to do the analysis. With respect to the role of-
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Rob.
Sure. With respect to the role of, of LAFCO, I can look specifically into that. I think it may depend on what occurs as to what LAFCO's role may be. And at this point, there's no proposal on the table, as I understand it, although Supervisor Semidian did indicate there are two supervisors who are interested in pursuing both the revocation of the delegation as well as consolidation, but not even Supervisor Semidian is certain what that means and indicated that we won't even know probably until the Wednesday before the October 6th Board of Supervisors meeting, what is being proposed if we even know it then. So I, I can do the legal assessment as to what the LAFCO's role would be based on specific questions that are asked. I've not done that in preparation for today's meeting because again, there's nothing pending. With respect to the role of the fire chief and the, the board of supervisors' questions for the fire chief, I, I don't know what the rationale behind the board asking specific questions is of the fire chief. I do know the fire chief is the chief of the Central Fire Protection District. And so that is the, the, that chief's authority. And to the extent the boards ask questions that go beyond that, there are probably any number of reasons they may do so, including they don't have other chiefs sitting before them able to answer questions to give them context and the weight it deserves. But the reality of it is, that would be a question that perhaps is best addressed to Supervisor Semidian or the individual board members as to, as to the scope of the questions that, that they're asking the fire chief.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Roger. Any other questions on the public? All right, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt 20-29.
Move adoption, this is Duffy speaking, move adoption of resolution 2029.
All right, any second, please?
I'd like a little second.
George's second? All right. So the item is now open for discussion. Any further discussion from commissioners?
I'd like to say that this, this marks the end of a relationship that has been a positive one for me with the Fire District, with Mr. Siegel, I guess I can say Dan. And I hate to see this end with such ignominious situation, but my thanks, amidst my vote to sever this, it goes along with my thanks.
All right. Roger, get in front of the skis, that's the next one we have to do.
That's next.
This is just adopting county counsel. But okay, anything else from the commissioners? Anything from the public? All right, District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now we'll move to item 13, adoption of resolution 20-30, authorizing notice of termination of the agreement for legal services between Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure and Fliegel LLP. Item 13A, resolution 20-30, authorizing, a resolution of Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing notice to terminate the agreement for legal services between the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure, Fliegel LLP. General Manager Logan, please present the item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The district board of commissioner approval of the exclusive use of county counsel for legal services for the district will require notice and termination of the current agreement for legal services between the district and Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure and Fliegel. The process for termination of the agreement is set forth in paragraph 11, and that's attached to the resol, to the resol, that was attached to, I think, one of the resolutions, is the notice of termination of the agreement for legal services effective five days after September 15th or such earlier date after September 15th, to which Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure and Fliegel agrees. So the attachment to resolution 20.30 is the letter of notice, is the notice of termination. End of my report, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right, are there any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Any from the public? All right, I'll now entertain a motion for 20-30.
Spreen moves resolution 2030.
Any second, please?
Vaughn, second.
Vaughn, second. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the commissioners?
I, I would say this is the time for me to say how much I've appreciated working with Dan, getting his guidance formally and informally at all hours of the day and night on very short notice, always felt very confident. He's always looking out for the best interests of our district and did his best to be responsive and helpful. And go Bears.
Any further comments from the commissioners?
Yes, this is Duffy. I just have to say that Dan has been fabulous and great to work with, and I owe a great deal to him for helping me when I first came aboard to be more respectful and, as Joe says, to be more peaches and cream. So thank you, Dan. It's been a joy working with you.
Anything else from commissioners?
I concur with the same thoughts with George and Duffy. I really enjoyed working with Dan as well and, you know, I'm hoping that this transition will be seamless and we can get the, the other kind of 24-hour responses to our needs as we've gotten in the past and, you know, so that, that's been one, one of my biggest concerns here. But, so we'll try it out and see how it goes. Doesn't seem like we have much choice. So, thank you, Dan.
Any other commissioners? Well, with that, Dan, I, I'll make the comment, I, it's been, it's, the last four years has been great working with you, getting to know you. I really appreciate the absolute professionalism of you and your firm and the support it's given the district. It has, it's been great working with you and wish you and your firm all the best moving forward in the future.
I'd like to make a comment also, just to comment how much I've enjoyed working with Dan and Jen Byers, who's just been terrific to work with over my almost two years with the district. And just to say that we all wish you well in your endeavors and we thank you for your service. Thank you.
Great. Any comments from the public?
Mark, Rob Quello here, can I make a quick comment, please?
Sure, thanks, Roger.
But I, one thing that I'd like all the commissioners to know, which will come as no surprise to any of you or any member of the public who's followed what's been happening with the district over many years that Dan and his firm has represented you, is that both Dan and Jen Byers have been extremely cooperative, collaborative and professional during the brief time that I've had the opportunity to learn more about the district, including, you know, multiple emails and phone calls to try to make sure the transition was going to be a smooth one for the district if the, if the resolutions today were, were approved. And so, you know, as somebody who's been practicing law for a long time and a small, tight-knit legal community, even though there's a lot of lawyers out there, I can let you know there's, you know, Dan and his firm certainly have been, as best I can tell, based on my interactions, a credit to you all and, and it sounds like the praise is, is definitely well deserved based on the comments tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another comment-
All right.
Mr. President, another comment, Jay Logan. As we do with outgoing commissioners or consulting staff, District Clerk Vargas, do you want to mention what we have prepared to send over to Mr. Siegel and Jen Byers?
Yes, so as is normally tradition with, with those that leave us, we have, I've ordered two paperweights, one for Dan and one for Jen, just to thank them for their years of service. I was hoping to have those today, but our normal engraver, due to COVID, they have limited staff, so it's taking longer. But I will be happy to deliver that to the offices of Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure and Fliegel once I receive those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Thank you, Jay. All right, with that, I think we need to move forward with a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move to item 14, financial consultant report, which is, so for item 14A, fiscal year 2021 slash 22, budget development and memorandum report. Fiscal consultant Vargas, please present the report.
Sorry about that, okay. Thank you, President Warren. And before you, you have the memo report for the fiscal year 2122 budget development. I would like to note at the very top recommendation, we recommend to appoint an ad hoc budget subcommittee. That is going to be revised, so if you could just cross out ad hoc and call it a Brown Act standing budget subcommittee. And basically, this is same thing we did last year, we, we started implementing the budget planning process earlier so that we're not slammed with trying to decide what our budget, our planning, our forecast of budget is in January. So I propose that the commission appoint the, the Brown Act standing budget subcommittee at tonight's meeting of two or more, two commissioners is usually the general recommendation. And it also includes General Manager Logan and myself. And any sort of recommendation that I can give names to, I have enjoyed working very much with Commissioners Spreen and Commissioners Vaughn in the past, so.
All right.
Commissioner Spreen will accept such a nomination if, if offered.
Great. Okay. So remember why we need to do this now, it's, I know it's September, but between now and the fact that we traditionally don't have a, a meeting in December, we've got October, November, and then January to get our budget house in order because we have to submit it in February to the county. So that's why instead of having a, for lack of a better term, a fire drill in February, January, February, we want to start this process now. So let's move forward with appointing an ad hoc, a Brown, Brown Act, ad hoc budget committee for fiscal year 2021, 22. Is there any discussion from the commission on this item? We need to appoint the commission, the subcommittee? Any comments from the commission? So we need, we need two nominees. So, so we've got, Roger's name has been, has been floated. Melvin, are you willing to serve again on the budget commission? Melvin, are you willing to serve again on the budget commission? Or budget ad hoc subcommittee?
Brown Act Standing.
Brown Act Standing Budget-
Subcommittee.
Yes, I'll give it another shot.
Thank you, Melvin. Appreciate it. Is there a third? We have room for a third? Going once, going twice? Okay. All right. Any other comments from the commissioners? So that's item 2020, that's item 14A. Is there anything else we need to do on item 14A, Cory?
Well, this is 14B that we're on right now is the actual appointment.
Okay.
So I think that if we have sort of a general consensus from the commission to have Spreen and Vaughn, then-
Question, is it too late for me to volunteer?
Oh, absolutely, Janice. More the merrier. You can be on the budget subcommittee, too. Thank you. You got three, Cory.
Sounds good. Great. And so then, next steps will, will follow, obviously offline with, with our subcommittee.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for volunteering for the budget subcommittee. All right.
President, I just wanted to mention that, again, we're recommending that the budget committee be appointed as a Brown Act Committee. And that means the meeting will be a, it will be held by Zoom, public is invited. And this is a recommendation going forward for this committee. So thank you for that. Thank you.
And just a quick comment, sorry, Rob Coelho, just a quick comment. Since you're going to have a three-person subcommittee that's going to be a Brown Act body, just a reminder to those three, you can't be conferring two of you at a time on the, on the, on the subcommittee-related work because if it's going to be a Brown Act body, we need to make sure we're complying with the Brown Act as it relates to notice meetings of the subcommittee. So if it's going to be standing, it may be a little, well, it's definitely going to be more formal than the, than the ad hoc subcommittee in the past. Just a reminder, and I'm happy to talk you through any issues that may arise, but the good work that you do, we can-
This is intriguing. Since in the past, we've had a two-member ad hoc, when this would now be a two, two or three-member Brown Act Standing Committee. If it was two people, does that mean we could, we could talk to each other? On any, you're saying if we have three, even on this committee, only two could speak to each? In fact, how does that work?
Within the scope of the, of the charge of the committee, you, you can't have a majority of the committee meet, right? The Brown Act requires that you have less than a majority meeting. And so if you've got three members or two members, well, if you've got three members, you have the same problem as if you have two members. You can't have two people meeting because that's a majority of your, your subcommittee. So it's possible to agendize meetings. You can all show up to the publicly noticed meetings and have whatever discussions that you want in compliance with the Brown Act. But the, it eliminates sort of the informality of sort of a phone call in the evening between two members of the subcommittee, which may be the most efficient way to get things done. But if it's going to be a standing Brown Act body, then there has to be Brown Act compliance as it relates to things within the scope. If you're talking about other issues that are not budget tied specifically, then obviously the two members could, could certainly communicate together.
Right. So there's really operationally no difference between two and three because either way, if it was two, I still couldn't talk to Melvin about this other than a public agendized meeting. This will, and same thing here, I can't speak to either of the others with three for the same reason.
That's correct legally, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Rob. All right, so that now takes us to, we'll now move on to item 14C, Report on the General Manager Approval for Professional Services Agreement between Los Alamos Hills County Fire District and O'Grady Paving or Adjustment of Hydrant Valve Boxes and Repainting Covers Between Meetings. Financial Consultant Vargas, please present the report.
Yes, so as, as was discussed earlier, the town was doing its repaving project. And the general manager used her in-between-meeting spending authorization. And this agreement, which is in your pack with O'Grady, is not to exceed $8,450. They identified 10 valves for sure that needed to be raised and a possible three more at a cost of $650 per valve. And I have not received the billing from O'Grady yet, so I do not know what the actual total is. And that's the end of my report on that.
Thanks, Cory. Thank you. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, we'll now move to 14D, Report on the General Manager's Approval for Professional Services Agreement between Los Alamos Hills County Fire District and Management Resources Group, MRG, for Successor Strategic Plan Services Between Meetings. Financial Consultant Vargas, please provide the report.
Thank you, Mark. Now, you will recall at the last meeting, this was discussed to work with MRG for the strategic planning process. And so, again, this is another in-between-meetings agreement that General Manager Logan signed with her authorization. This agreement is not to exceed $5,000. And again, I have not received a bill yet. I don't know what the actual total is. And I want to just add for those two items, C and D, the total did not exceed the general manager's authorized, authorized spending limit of $15,000. And that's the end of my report.
Thanks, Cory. Thank you. Is there any discussion from the commission? Any public comment on this? All right, we'll now move to item 15, Resolution, Resolution 20-30, Resolution of Los Alamos Hills County Fire District Authorizing Execution of Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement between Los Alamos Hills County Fire District and, I think this is, there's a typo here, Management, Management Resources Group for Strategic Planning Services. All right, so we're on 15A Memorandum Report and item 15B Resolution 20-30 between the Fire District and Authorizing Execution of Amendment One for Professional Services Agreement between Los Alamos Hills Fire District and MRG for Strategic Planning Services. General Manager Logan, please provide the report and present the resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Phase one of the strategic planning process for a strategic, successor strategic plan is completed. And Marcy Scott, who's the district consultant and facilitator, will provide a report and the next steps for phase two. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you. And I should thank you, Marcy Scott, for staying aboard with us, and I'll turn the report over to you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan and President Warren and members of the commission. I'm Marcy Scott with Municipal Resource Group, here to speak to you about this item on the successor strategic plan. I'll make just a couple of comments, given the late hour. The ad hoc subcommittee of the strategic plan, Commissioners Price, Spreen, and Carr, went right to work and have prepared a commission process to prepare and adopt a successor strategic plan by November of this year. My role has been to facilitate two community meetings hosted by the ad hoc subcommittee in August and draft materials based on content discussed by the subcommittee, which has informed tonight's proposal. In summary, this evening, the subcommittee has provided initial proposed edits to the existing mission, values, and proposed goals in the memorandum report that is in your packet. The intent is to initiate thinking on these topics and to ask for any initial comments from any commissioners or the public. Additionally, the subcommittee proposes scheduling one special commission meeting in October with the possibility of another. The commission would use these special meetings to discuss the draft document, take stakeholder and public comment, which builds upon the existing strategic plan and the work that has been accomplished to date. The subcommittee requests your authority to move forward as proposed. And again, in summary, what that would look like if, if the commission wishes to move forward at this point, I would draft and prepare a successor strategic plan for review by the subcommittee, by the staff, and then send to the full commission before October 1st, which would be a special commission meeting to talk just about the successor strategic plan. At that meeting, then, the commission would confirm whether an additional special meeting is needed. And then with further refinement, the final draft of the successor plan would be prepared for a review and a final adoption on November 17th at the regular meeting. So that concludes my summary comments. I'm available for questions, and I will turn this back to President Warren.
Thank you, Marcy. All right, are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right. Any questions from the public? All right, I'll now entertain a motion for this is 20-30. Entertain a motion for 20-30?
31.
31.
31, thank you.
Spreen moves the motion.
Thank you, Roger. Need a second, please?
Nice and a little second.
Thank you, George. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from commissioners? All right, is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, we'll now move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kearney?
Commissioner Kearney left the phone conference.
Left, okay, so.
Yeah, I think we've lost just six.
Absent, so the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you, Cory. All right, we'll now move to item 16, Consent Calendar. Item 16A, Approval of Draft Minutes of the July 28, 2020 Regular Meeting. 16B, Received Period Report Number One for July 2020. And 16C, Received Period Report Two, August 2020. Are there any comments from the staff on these items?
I have no comment.
All right, hearing none. Would anyone like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on these items? All right, there's no further discussion. We'll now move for a vote to adopt 16A, B, and C.
Tyson, so moves.
All right. Thank you, George. We need a second.
Three seconds.
Thank you, Roger. All right, District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kearney, I think, is still absent. So the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. We'll now move to item 17, Received Disbursements. Item 17A, August 2020, and item 17B, September 2020. Financial Consultant Vargas, please share the disbursement.
Thank you. You have the dispersments in front of you, and I have no additions. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Cory. Any comments from the commissions on this? Any comments from the public? All right, we'll now move on to item 18, The Commission Member Report. All right, do any of the commissioners have any reports to make this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move to item 19, which is adjournment. All right. We will, this concludes the September 15th, almost September 16th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Los Alamos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at 10:32 PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on October 20th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Special Projects, Special Project Services Consultant Hendrix, please stop the recording.